Steven, we can see you today.
Wow, look at that. Holy mackerel.
Now you make me feel bad.
He's on mute. You're on mute though, Steven. I can't read lips very well.
Well, I had trouble figuring out what to get Justin for Christmas and I know how bad he's been wanting this and so I figured, you know, it's, it's the giving time of year, so.
Well, I appreciate it. Put my.
I don't like having a video because then I have to stare at my own ugly mug. It's one thing for you guys to have to stare at it, but me.
You can change your view so you could have like gallery view or speaker view. So up in the right hand corner, it says view. It says gallery.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be everybody on, that'll be everyone who calls in or gets on.
How do you put in the fancy backgrounds or whatever?
That's under your video. It's next to your, where it says video, like a little carrot. Click on the carrot and says choose virtual background. So if you have one, you can do that. So that's crab crick right there. So it looks like I'm out fishing. Steven's virtual background is a couch with a lampshade there next to him, lamp pole.
Not everyone can get this background. It's, it's, you have to unlock it.
That's right. And then Nathan, did you see that thing about sharing your screen there on the bottom two?
Yeah.
So you can, that's if you, if you click on that, then it'll say which screen. So like if you have that Excel window open, like for your Excel thing, then it will be in there. And then you can still use Excel and run that. Wow, look at Steven's like, is that the Great Wall, Steven? You're already, you're in China now.
It's amazing how I get used to technology.
Yeah, maybe we'll have to do a Zoom when we get the iPads. Like, so I taught yesterday, I taught last week and I taught yesterday, eight hours on Zoom with about thirty-five people each in, just dealing with the stuff, so. I've gotten better with like, I had to share my screen. I was doing a PowerPoint presentation too, so, but those are the things that, that way people want to do it on the council day, or if they have something they want to show us. Or like if Janice or you as the administrators, Nathan, like if you had something that we wanted on there, we could see.
The, the one thing I'd be curious, are you, do you have the ability to share your screen right now or do I have to change something?
Uh, you, you would have to change it because right now I clicked on it. It says host disabled participant screening, sharing, screen sharing.
Yeah, and it says one participant can share at a time, multiple participants. Yeah, I can't even change it, so it must be in the settings.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter's on here, Levi just, or.
Can you hear me?
Justin, Levi, you're on with us.
I can hear you, Peter, when you talked a minute ago.
Good, thank you.
I don't think we have Levi yet.
Who's the nine-nine-three-oh-six-six-three?
Not entirely sure.
Oh. Do you know, did David say he was going to be able to make it?
That's, that's me, nine-nine-three-zero-six-six-three is me.
Oh, David, David right there. Sorry, David, I don't know your number in my heart yet.
Okay.
Ding cell phones, they don't let you memorize anything.
Hey Nathan, it looks like you're recording this too.
Yeah, it is. I think it automatically starts.
You might want to, I mean, if you want to stop it, we don't typically, just for a public workshop, we don't like, if we were in person, we wouldn't record it or whatever. So I don't know if it makes a difference.
Yeah.
But just so you know.
Okay.
My intent is that when I get things, hopefully by January, all the Zoom meetings will automatically start a YouTube livestream. So I don't think there's any harm in having it recorded probably.
Yeah.
Which also, by the way, the YouTube channel for the city can now be accessed at youtube.harrington.city.
Okay, well.
Christmas came early for Steven. He got to play some more techie toys.
It's not often that I get to bring six thousand dollars worth of hardware into the house, but. Yeah, I'm working through it. Nathan, I guess, didn't some type of approval for getting us set up for the Apple Business Manager thing. Then I'll have to move to the next step with that, but that's what's going to hopefully allow some control over some things. Not only so that we can remote configure, but also that we can try and lock down some personal uses, which would not be in scope for this, so.
Yeah, I got a call and I thought it was a scam. I'm like, I don't know if I should be calling them. So the first thing they did was ask me for information and then I, I finally got to the point where I was like, okay, this is legitimate. I should probably be closer and give them the information they need.
I haven't got an email back that I know of yet, so we'll see where it goes.
Yeah.
I keep getting texts from you guys from Google for some security, security codes.
Hopefully that should be changed soon. There's some sort of a delay in there, but.
Yeah, I hope so too, soon.
That brings up one topic that actually has relevancy to the budget. Yeah, I missed, I didn't get a chance to examine things line by line, Nathan, but I know you said you were going to put in line items for the website stuff. I'm wondering if it would also behoove us to, for sixty dollars a year, get that OnePass set up as a password manager. It'll tie into the biometrics of all these devices. And that would help, I think, a lot as far as, the other thing that OnePass will do for you is that, you know, those one-time password things that change every thirty seconds. It can also manage those in addition to the passwords, because I think it would be a nice situation to have. You have your vault, Janice have her vault. We can share a vault between the two of you, so there's a set of, set of passwords that are shared, and then there might be a few that are exclusive to you. And neither of you can get into those vaults without a passing face ID or biometric thumbprint scan. And that should help kind of conclude the transition away from our kind of horrible security problems, or not problems, but vulnerabilities that we've had of late. And I, I believe I can look it up, but I think it's only sixty dollars a year, which I don't think should make or break anything, but as we're talking about changing some money around towards a little bit better technology spend year over year. I think that's probably an appropriate thing to say that we have our ducks in a row. Otherwise, passwords are just going to sit either reused all the time, or on some sheet of paper that if a person walks into the office and gets a hold of that sheet of paper, there goes the whole ballgame, so.
Yeah. No, I agree in.
I think, I think Nathan, you could just put that in, not as a line item, but like is under current expense, like office, office items or office supplies.
Yeah.
I think getting anything like under a hundred dollars as a whole, like as an individual item, you're not gonna, unless it's a specific line item that we know about, like, I, I would just lump it in, something like that.
Yeah, there's some, well, and there's even, I mean, I don't know if this technically falls under that line item, but there's a capital outlay for security of persons and property. I mean, obviously, most of that deals with the sheriff's office, that, like, that kind of security, but I wonder if something like that could go into that capital outlay. There's a earmark in there, five hundred bucks, so.
Yeah. I mean, you can do it, you can put it in there too specifically, is, I mean, I'm looking here now for administrative services membership under CE, uh, current expense for forty dollars. I mean, you just have to find the bars code. That's the challenge too, is making sure that the bars code, you know. So however you want to classify that, but I mean, I, if it was a, something like that for, it was in our situation, if I would, like when we were doing it, I would have just bundled it into that, knowing sixty bucks that it was going to go into one of those buckets.
Right.
So do you want us to start then? I mean, I know you, we have the budget document itself, but then you have the other attachments, which I think obviously play a bigger role in the budget on how you can, like what the next step would be, so is it?
Yeah, I think so. The main points that I sent out in that email, those are kind of definitely, that's where I want to start. So the, the three big things were, obviously, the salary stuff, the utilities, and I don't know if it's a, well, it kind of ties into the salaries, but the benefits as well, the, the health insurance cap or proposed cap. So I definitely want to, want to start there and kind of get talking on that. And hopefully, I don't see Levi yet, so hopefully he chimes in pretty quick.
Hey Nathan, this is David.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good question for you. This is not public, correct? This meeting?
Yeah, it's, it's still a public meeting, yes. It's just, uh, there's no action taken. It's just discussion only.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good, thanks.
Yep.
And just so you know, David, Sherry McClellan is on here, a video, I mean, you can't see it because you're on your phone, but she's on here as a member of the public. So right now it's Steven, Peter, Nathan, you, me, and Sherry.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay, well, it just happens to be first in the email, so I think we'll start there with the utility rates. The big question, I mean, we've spoke about it already some, but the, the big, or the part of that that I really want to discuss was the, the garbage can sizes and the rates, you know, Steven, Justin and Steven and myself met and talked about it a little bit more. Steven has brought it up, I think, at a previous either special meeting or regular meeting of changing those rates. So you guys see on the email that I sent, it's got the, it's got the rates per can there, I think. What are they? Less than a dollar difference, or? What were they?
Fifty-six cents for.
Yeah, fifty-six cents.
Medium and then fifty-seven cents.
Yep. So Steven, if you would, just quickly, you're kind of, I'm going to have you kind of spearheaded again, so that you can put it into better words than I, kind of the thought process on that.
Well, really, it's getting at the fact that we pay two garbage-related fees. We pay the tipping fee of actually picking up the can and putting it in the back of the truck, and then we pay again when the truck unloads by weight at the transfer station.
Correct.
And the problem that we have is, is that while the tipping fee is, I don't know if it's in the sheet here, it's the, the, the cost of actual, the can is not really much to tip it either way between the two sizes. What we're really trying to get at is a better handle on the tipping fees. Uh, because in thirty gallons difference.
Lost to Steven.
Oh. Am I back?
You're back.
Try again.
Okay. I, I'm on the T-Mobile connection right now. Maybe it's having some struggles. If I keep having issues, let me know and I'll switch over to my Sentrylink, but the thirty gallons difference between this, the sixty-four gallon can or whatever it is in the ninety-something gallon can, you could fill that difference with, with Styrofoam and it'd be really light and wouldn't add much to the tipping fee, or you could fill it with something extremely heavy and it would add a lot to the tipping fee. So on average, what we're saying here is that the additional thirty gallons should be worth more than a dollar difference towards trying to represent usage, basically. So that hopefully, what was it, that we were looking like we were going to be to ten thousand down on tipping fee through the year or something like that. So we're trying to get that back, a, a handle on that.
Yeah.
And because the, the garbage fee generally continues to go up, the thinking was to hold the price of the smaller can, I should say smaller, because it's not, we're not talking about thirty-two gallon, I don't think, because that has a separate tipping concern and charge that's additional, because they can't tip it the same way. Um, but the smaller can would stay the same and the larger can rate would go up. So it's not necessarily an increase on everyone. It kind of depends on what your usage is. And it's trying to kind of, I would say, at least in my humble opinion, make a little bit more equitable that those that are contributing more towards the city's tipping costs are paying more towards the city's tipping costs. And those that are contributing less don't bear the weight of an increase this time.
Correct. I agree.
Steven.
Go ahead, David.
Steven, this, okay, thanks. Steven, I got a question. What is the majority of the, the cans? What, what gallonage are they called? Like you see, like where I live and the majority of them, what, what are they? How many gallon?
I would estimate that the majority are the, are the ninety-something gallon ones. Uh, I don't have the numbers to back that up. I, I don't know if we can get that readily, but I will say this. When there's only a dollar difference between the ninety-five and the sixty-five.
It's fifty-seven cents, Steven.
Fifty-seven cents. Yeah, I don't think very many people, you know, the only reason why you go a small, smaller can is that you really want that fifty-seven cents per month. Or you just like having a smaller can to pull around. Otherwise, I think everyone else probably goes, well, heck, for fifty-seven cents a month, I'll take an additional thirty gallons so that I don't have additional waste, so. I'm pretty sure it's safe to say the majority are the large ones.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't know the numbers either, but I think when I talked to Janice the other day, she'd said that a majority are those bigger cans.
I, I don't think I've ever seen any small ones.
We, we have a, personally, I, I have a sixty-four gallon one. My mom has a thirty-five gallon one, but I don't know.
Okay.
But that, not that.
I.
But then my next door neighbor has a one or two yard dumpster. You know, is there a trash can? So it's.
Yeah, I got you. Are we addressing any of that? If a guy, if a person wants to go with a dumpster, are those rates, have we toyed with any of that?
I haven't moved any of those rates around. No, I think those, when you start to get into the bigger dumpsters, those, those prices are a little more reputable as far as the difference in them. I mean, you know, from going to the, from the ninety-six gallon to a, to a one yard dumpster, you know, it's, it's more than a dollar or fifty, sixty cents, so. But no, I haven't toyed with.
Okay.
Here's a comment. You've, thank you, Steven, for defining tipping fees. I thought tipping fees were uh, based on the weight when the truck dumps its load into the transfer station. Apparently that's not the case.
No, but it is.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is. Okay, well, I have a ninety-six gallon bin and I probably don't generate more than two to five pounds of trash a week. And if we raise that the rate significantly, it would cause me to go to a smaller can. I wonder whether what you've proposed might lead to an actual net loss of revenue for the city.
I suspect. I, I don't think so, because, so I'm in the same boat that I would, I'm planning on moving to the smaller can. But keep in mind, the sixty-four gallon can is only fifty-seven cents a month cheaper than the big one. So the, the rate increase on those who decide to stay with a ninety-five gallon can are, are likely to far outweigh those where we might lose fifty-sevens cents a month, or you could just say that we're going to bring the small can price up to the, to the current cost of the large can, so that there's no potential for loss, but I think there's a number of people, those who have larger households. You know, Peter, you, you're one person in a household, Becky and I are two. Those who have a few kids with them, they might not really want to think that they're going to change to a smaller can, so I think there's, or at least they, they might not feel like first, you know, to, to learn about it in a couple of weeks or whatever. Some people are going to probably learn about it through an increased bill and then ask Janice, why is my bill going up, you know, or something like that. It's propagation of information means this is going to probably take a while before it changes to, to go down some, but in the end, still, the, the overall goal of that would be to try and represent the fact that thirty additional gallons of trash should, should represent some more additional weight. And that additional weight is going to contribute more towards the tipping fee. It's just, you know, like, it's, it's when I moved into town and I asked Bunny about the garbage situation and she told me there were three different cans and I'm like, well, what's the cost difference? Well, you know, I'd probably go with the small one. She's like, are you sure? Because it's only fifty-seven cents more to go with the large one, right? So it kind of encourages, I think, it encourages people to get used to contributing more weight and more material into the truck, which costs the city and there's no real representation of that second charge that we incur on a monthly basis.
Does Sunshine weigh the bins when they pick them up by any chance?
No.
It's just weighed, weighed by the truckload at the transfer station. I'd agree with you, Steven. I think that's something else that I hadn't thought about. Obviously, I'm in favor of making that difference for the ninety-six gallon can bigger. Um, and then Peter brought up the point of, you know, maybe potentially losing some money. People do go down to a smaller can, but if we were to bump those cans, or at least the, the sixty-four gallon can up to the price, um, which you're talking fifty-seven cents, bumping that up to the bigger can and then changing the bigger can from there, the amount that is feasible or should be for the ninety-six gallon can. I don't know the answer to that right off the bat. What, what are your, guys' ideas on on the big can fee? I mean, are we looking at, you know, a buck or two, or what's, what's your thought there?
Nathan, my only comment this far or so far would be some of this is dependent on the salaries. So for the salaries increase too, I mean, that's again, this is how we, this is how we pay those people, I mean, pay our employees. And so if we, it's a little bit chicken and egg at this point, but if we have a X amount of increase here, we want to make sure, I think the base thing, no matter what, like you started with, is we know that Sunshine and Lincoln County rates are going up in twenty, excuse me, twenty-twenty-one, so we want to make sure that our garbage rates, no matter what, cover that increase. I think that, you know, we did, the city can't afford to, to, um, to eat that by itself. And then the salaries thing is again, different, I mean, that's a different component, but it also needs to be considered because if there is a, while we can limit the, the maintenance crews hours out there, uh, the clerk's hours every month doing the bills is, is a, traditionally, I mean, it's the water, sewage and garbage, but that's where, you know, I don't know if it's twenty-five percent of the time or whatever was allocated before, but so just something to think about there too, that it might be a little bit chicken and the egg with, would depend what you do with salaries. But I, I think at the minimum, knowing that that Sunshine is charging us more and Lincoln County transfers charging us more, we want to at least at the bare minimum, cover that increase.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and both of those, I mean, those do go up, I think. As long as I've been involved, that Sunshine's definitely gone up, uh, year by year, about one and a half percent this year. Um, and then there's a, there's a fuel surcharge in there as well, so that usually doesn't come till the first of the year, but that's, that's a good point.
I think you have actually three things to consider in, in that regard. Before I list them, make sure I'm on board with this. So my mention that I said earlier that so far we've been in the hole on our tipping fee. So it would be correct to say that historically the city of Harrington has been subsidizing its garbage rate by not fully covering the tipping fee. Is that a correct way, according to your understanding?
Yes, to my understanding, and it certainly looks that way.
Okay, so then you have three considerations, I think. One, trying to get out of the hole from, from subsidizing the rate. If that's something that we would want to do, which personally I do. You could argue that maybe we want to take money from someplace and put it there so that we purposely subsidize the rate, but in general, I think it's wise to try and pass on the rates, keep them as low as we can and then pass them on to our, 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 the people in the town. That's all we can do.
Yeah.
That's one thing. Second is the cost of businesses going up. And that's what Justin's referring to there is to cover that. And then the third thing is what do you do about salaries, which the third aspect of it, I think, is where you also bring into question inactive rates and water and sewer and that type of thing. So I would say you might, before you talk about salaries in specific regards to garbage, what I would suggest is first, let's think about what do we need to do to get it out of the hole, one. And two, keep it out of the hole by covering our cost of rate increases. And then when we talk about salaries, let's talk about that in terms of a larger issue of inactive and everything else, because while it's true that this can go towards salaries, it's not the only thing that can.
I got, I got a question for everybody. This is David. Has any consideration been given to what other towns, Davenport, Wilbur, Odessa, Sprague and stuff, charge for garbage cans? Does anybody know that for that one?
I haven't specifically looked at it, David. No, I don't know what their contracts are like or what they're involved. Obviously, there's different population, but I, I don't know if that plays into part or not.
What, what I know.
I'd just be curious.
On previous year, it was a matter of trying to get, regardless of what they did, so I mean, also stepping back two years ago or three years ago, we did not take our trash to Lincoln County. And since we didn't take our trash to Lincoln County, because, um, before Sunshine, it was Empire, we still got charged a program fee by Lincoln County for not taking our trash there. So our, our trash rates were even different then. And so my, my goal when I was doing the budget as the mayor was not knowing what the other county, the other towns did. I didn't, because I don't know what their trash rate, I mean, I don't know what their, what their basis is. I just knew what our basis was. Our basis was, here's what we get charged every year based on tonnage from the county. And here's what it costs for us, our contract with Sunshine. So I was trying to get as close to that that line. I can't see my hands here, sorry, that line, um, without, without any, you know, regardless of, this was just for garbage. Now, when we did sewer and water, yes, I talked to the other, I looked, I researched that and I talked to several people, but it, it's so indifferent because it depends on when or if a municipality had a new, a new plant or not, like a new wastewater treatment plant. So our rates for sewer were pretty high relative to some places here, but then people said, well, just wait. They haven't had an assessment or they haven't, they haven't upgraded. So when they upgrade, they're going to be expensive. I looked at other small towns on the west side of the state that, um, not obviously in our, just more westerly than us. And they, they had rates that were similar to ours as well. So for outside of garbage, I did look at those, but it was also again, what was our basis? We had our, our, we had our own cost basis that, you know, uh, maybe it was affected, you know, is different than other cities anyway.
Yeah, and I think for garbage, that's, I mean, I think we can't, we're allowed to, or can and should go that route. I mean, what does it cost us? We need to be able to cover those costs, like Steven said, and, and not subsidize those fees.
Well, I think a key thing is, my understanding is, is it correct that we're that are, that there's essentially Empire, essentially, or Sunshine, I mean, essentially has a monopoly at this point. There is no choice for us. We're, we pay what they tell us we pay. Choice for us. We're, we pay what they tell us we pay and that's, we have no bargaining power. We can't take our business elsewhere. We're just along for the ride, right?
Yes, from what I've been told, yeah.
But I I will say too, I I'm on the Lincoln County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Which Rory Winterstein runs, uh, manages, but obviously, um, Sunshine is there. Um, Rob Kaufman sold his garbage company to Sunshine, so they are the only player, but they, I think they have certain. Under the utilities and transportation commi- uh, commission of the U T C of the Washington State. There's certain things they can and can't do, so they're not, I wouldn't say they're gouging us, but we don't have any option. I mean, Empire, when Empire. Uh, they they got bought out and Dylan, that's when Dylan was the mayor, the the next rate increase they were gonna do, they were gonna increase their rates by. I think it might have been a hundred, at least a hundred percent. Um, and so they basically told us they did not wanna, they didn't want our business anymore. They did not want us to do. Uh, they did not wanna come up here from Colfax or Cornell, wherever they were from, and haul our trash back down to Grant County. Adams County to tip it and and whatnot, so, um. And so Sunshine was better than Empire for us at the time. They, again, their rates were, and knowing that, and they they were, uh, Mark Torres is their. Is their CEO or their president, that is very active involved, that that this, uh. The SWAC, it's called the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, very involved in that, and they're. They're conscious of what's happening, but again, they, they have those garbage trucks. I mean, they have their, that that's why their their swing is the fuel surcharge. That they they can do, um, I don't, I don't, I can't speak for sure, but, um. I think there's some times when it hasn't been implemented. So that's their kinda hedge for inflation. If things go really bad. That's what they have an option for, but they they haven't always, I don't think, taken that, but they've told us, yeah, hey, CPI is going up. And we're gonna raise your rates by one point four percent or one point eight.
Yeah, I'm I'm not accusing them of gouging us. I guess I'm saying is it pertains to. How we relate to the other cities around us.
Yeah, they, well, everyone, um, yeah, Reardon, Davenport, uh, Wilbur, Creston, they all use it.
Right.
Have their own. I don't know if they still do, but, um.
So just saying that if for some reason they decided to charge Davenport twenty five percent less. We couldn't do anything about it anyways. Really, the only numbers that we can be accountable to are the numbers they tell us we're accountable to at the end of the day, so.
Right, they're coming out farther too. They're coming out fifteen miles farther than Davenport. You know, from their base in Spokane and Davenport has twice as many, if not more. Than the number of, um, of houses to pick up on, so they might be able to get more done in Davenport. Just in an economy as a scale than they can out in Harrington.
Right.
Getting here and things, so, yeah, we we are, we're, I mean, there's no other options that I'm aware of, um, that that.
Okay, well, that kinda rolls us into part of it, I think, uh, Stephen kinda mentioned a little bit on it, um, before we really. Talk about price or if we want to, you know, talk about the increase or difference, um, is the inactive rates. I know we've. Talked quite a bit about it since I've been involved as well as probably beforehand, but, um. That's a.
Nathan, you wanna, you wanna move on to that before we come to. A recommendation or a thought on whether we're increasing what we're what we're doing on the big can, the small can and how much?
Yeah, I think so, just because that will, I mean, like Justin said, it's, it is a little bit chicken and egg type of deal. However, I think we should. Change numbers.
With salaries, yeah, but I guess let me put it this way, to try and get out of the ten grand hole and to try and keep up with rate increases. I think that before you even maybe add on to it further to talk about salaries. I think you're probably talking about at least two dollars on the big can. And then salary potential distribution is after that point.
Right.
Is my thought.
Okay.
If we talk to any of the drivers on Sunshine to get their impression of whether. People with bigger cans necessarily generate more garbage. We seem to be in a dark spot on that point. Your point is well taken, Stephen, but it's, uh. Hypothesis that the bigger can.
If a person who has a bigger can is not use, is not generating more garbage, then they shouldn't have a problem going to a smaller can.
Yeah. That cuts to the point I made, uh, I generate very little trash, as I mentioned. But I like the option of having a big can if I need it. That's been the case for.
Right, and I do too, but from the perspective of running this from the city. Having that option is something that costs something.
I mean, that, I mean, potentially, it's a thirty percent increase, right, in, um. In volume, so. From a weight perspective, you could, I mean, if you wanna put a bunch of concrete, like like Stephen said, with styrofoam. I could fill mine up with styrofoam peanuts and it, it's it's super light, but then if somebody else next door to me chose to put in, you know, three big things of concrete. Um, we're still paying the same rate, but ultimately the city, the 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 user is paying the same rate. But the city is paying quite a bit more for that person, just on that case, or or again, I I have a, I have a sixty four gallon. We, our family of four generates one, um. Like nineteen gallon bag of trash a week. We don't very use very much trash. We recycle quite a bit. Uh, that's why I don't have the smallest one, cause I, I think it's about roughly the same. It's, yeah, it's fifty six cents difference. But the middle one for me is, to what Peter says, sometimes I wanna use more, I will. Now, at our coffee shop, we have a, uh, the ninety six gallon can. Uh, the things that we throw away mostly are paper cups and, you know. Refuge from this, but our can every week is full at the ninety six gallon for that, but it's not very heavy. You know, my, I mean, I could, I could still make my smaller can heavy if I wanted to, so I think that's the thing though, is you could do it. And the 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 problem though is that the city is the one ultimately on the hook with the weight, the the volume, I mean, it's the weight thing. And there's no, um, I mean, when we re- remodeled our property here, we used a two yard or three yard thing. I filled that thing up with glass and and, um, with, um. La- laughter with plaster. That was super heavy. I'm sure I got a good deal, even though it was probably twice as much on the dumpster, the three yard versus a. A ninety six gallon, but for me, I mean, I wasn't paying the weight, so I threw all that glass and I mean, I was allowed to. Um, but I'm sure that I got my money's worth out of that, you know, relative to what the city had to take care of, I mean.
And I think to Peter's point too, um, you know, if if person chooses to not wanna pay the extra. If the bigger, if the biggest can went up and stayed at the sixty four gallon can, if you happen to generate. A little bit more, say around the holidays or or whatever the reason is. You have the ability to have an extra bag picked up and that cost itself is not that much either, so. It's really beneficial for the customer themselves to. If they're not going to generate a full ninety six gallon can every month to have the smaller one. And then maybe three months out of the year that they have an extra bag that they need to throw out. Or I'm sorry, three weeks or whatever it might be. I mean, that's just, that's a small cost associated to have a little bit more trash. While being able to use that, uh, the middle sized can the rest of the year. So that's another option too. Another thing to kinda think of.
Nathan, to your point, I think that one extra bag, I think it's like two dollars.
Or or even a dollar, it's really not much.
Right, but so just okay, by itself, one extra bag is a dollar, say it's a dollar. Um, a week, right? If you had one extra bag a week, here right now, it's only fifty seven cents difference. You know, so I mean, obviously, again, this. That's the Peter's point too of like, sometimes you wanna use it, but right now there's no incentive to. To, you know, kinda contain that. And and again, the city, the city has no way to control it. Other than by trying to then maybe potentially work on these prices.
Yep.
Well, I think it becomes a concern of equity. Uh, cause you know, the most equitable thing would be if we could weigh every can before it was. Put into the back of the truck and then we can charge people on the pound, but since we don't have that option. Every cost that is the city's is inherently a distributed cost to all of the citizens. So then the question is, how do we try and make it so that the people who use more pay more and the people who use less pay less? And so, given that our costs are going up, and in fact, that's actually almost irrelevant compared to the fact that we haven't even been covering, covering our costs to date. The question I think is who should bear an increased cost, so you can raise everyone's rates. Under the, the thought that maybe a ninety six gallon can doesn't use as much garbage as a small sixty four gallon can. Or you can postulate that the extra gallons does result in some type of a weight correlation. They would say that that equi- that what is more equitable is that in lieu of being able to actually weigh the can. We're going to assume that volume has some bearing on weight. And this is as close as we can get to try and evenly distribute the costs to the citizens.
And I think that's a correct statement. I mean, a person would have to, except for some special cases, would have to assume that. More volume is more weight. I know that it can go the other way, it's possible, but that's, that's a safe assumption. In my eyes, at least, my opinion.
Well, I mean, I think, I don't know if it's thirty, you know, obviously thirty percent more. Volume equates to thirty percent more fee from the, from the middle one. I mean, if if Stephen's talking about equitable, the fairest way, then potentially that's a way to think about it. Um, if if if, just say the sixty four gallon is twenty bucks, just for even, it's nineteen fifty right now, but just say for easy purposes, it's twenty bucks. And then you do a third more than that, then it would be about seven dollars. Right, or six, I mean, six eighty eight or something like that, but, I mean. Is that, I mean, that's close to what Stephen is saying at five dollars. I mean, I don't, but that's. A way to look at it. Uh, that's, I mean, pure math, it's, that would tell somebody that at least our base rate is twenty dollars. In this instance, and, um, you know, the the. They're they're still gonna come up a question for the person that gets the thirty five gallon can. How come mine's not thirty percent less than? Or actually, that's half basic, almost half. So why or why is, so my my rate should be forty percent less, but as we know. At least the ones on, I mean, it it looked at this, I mean, to say the budget committee or the council, um, Sunshine's rates for that thirty five gallon can. Are the same, the pickup rate is the same. They they charge the same amount, so there is no. Really savings that way. The only savings would be on the tipping fee portion, so there could still be a tier though. Um, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's three dollars cheaper. Uh, for that thirty five gallon can, because we know that the the weight, the volume there isn't gonna be as great.
Yeah, I think that, I wouldn't say that you make it a full third more, because essentially I think you're trying to represent two costs. And I I don't know if the way that they price it to us necessarily purely helps that. There's, there's the cost of actually lifting a can and tipping it. Right, coming out, getting the can, lifting the can, lifting the contents, putting in the back. In theory. I I heard, you know, I know that the small can, supposedly they can't tip the same way, so there's, there's a difference there. But in theory, if you just talk about, if you could lift all cans equally, the cost to to service a can does not change based upon its size. It's, it's the weight representation there, so so if you think of it that way. All three cans would have some kind of a base, what it costs to service a can. And then on top of that, you would have an additional fee that represents its contribution towards the the weight fee. That portion of it, I would agree, should be at equal thirds, but the total cost of a can, it's like the the graph. Doesn't just keep going down to zero, you know, uh, uh, theoretically, if you had a one gallon can, it would still have a minimum. Cost of servicing the can, right? So it not, it doesn't scale it at perfect thirds all the way through the system. There's a minimum and then it breaks up. So our new cost, I think, of the large can should be less than. Thirty three percent more than the small can today, but I agree that the theory is that when you are trying to represent weight. And maybe that does mean that you change the the small can fee appropriately, that the the weight portion of it. Were tying a certain representation of weight to the gallon size of the can itself. And that that is important.
I got a question for you, Stephen, and the rest of you, just food for thought, and so I've become crystal clear on this. Uh, for example, uh, number one, i- is this basically in a nutshell, just, um, a revenue generator for us? Because I'm having a hard time understanding, I have a two yard, um, dumpster I own, uh, out of my farm. Is dumped once a month, and it's forty one dollars, no matter what, if I put concrete in it or if I put feathers in it. And on the bill I'm looking at, there's nothing about tipping fees and and is this something that, uh. Is overlooked or or dealing with the cities? Why, why, why does it matter? I guess my question is, if you filled your, whatever it is, your garbage out in front of your place up with feathers and concrete. The whole load goes over there and then they charge a tipping, why, why isn't it the same? I mean, why, what's the difference? It's the same company, Sunshine Disposal. Does, can anybody explain that? I haven't never looked into that, and I'm satisfied with what I have. But I just wondered why we're discussing the different, different sizes where in my mind, it should all be the same, basically. Uh, or is there maintenance to something, or something I'm missing here, that that I'm not putting all the puzzle together? And if it's just a a revenue generator, I understand that, but I I just don't, from a logistical standpoint, it it doesn't, doesn't. Jive with me because.
David.
Like I said, my example, so please explain. Go ahead, I yield.
David, this is Justin, so there's, there's two fees the cities in, it incurs with garbage every, uh, every month. There, there's our annual, Stephen called it a picking fee, it's called the hall, we'll call it the the hauling, the service. That Sunshine charges us. So Sunshine charges us based on the number of people in our town. They they give us a rate and says, here's what's gonna charge you every month to pick up trash. So that's one fee. That's like your forty one dollars a month.
Okay.
They have to take it somewhere and they take it to Lincoln County, transfer station. Lincoln County then charges us based on the weight, so so, um. Sunshine goes there with Harrington's trash, they dump it, and then they weigh it, and they says, you guys generated, um, say twelve tons. And then we get a bill from Lincoln County, says you guys just, um. Uh, you guys just dumped twelve tons at a hundred and five dollars, a hundred and ten dollars a ton, here's your bill now.
Right.
So, when when I said we were with Empire, Empire hauled it down to, uh, Grant County, I believe. Or Adams County, one of the two on their way home. And because we did not participate with Lincoln County. They charged us a, an additional program fee. So in that case, we had three garbage bills every month, three components. We had the program fee for not participating, we had the tipping fee, and then we had the hauling fee. So now though, we have two fees. We have the tipping fee with the transfer station. And I think we budgeted, Nathan, if I'm right, it's probably in there too, two hundred and fifty. Thousand tons or two hundred and fifty tons, I don't, it was two hundred and fifty something, um. But, so we budgeted, um, that's on garbage.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty tons.
Two hundred and fifty tons, so about twelve tons. And when I came up with that number. Or this numbers, this probably is an iteration of what I started with, I looked at all the prior years to say, okay, what's our, what's been our average? Um, average annual weight, and that's how I use that to budget that, or how to derive a number. Um, the problem, oh, two, is that Lincoln County now, every, for the last several years, has also been increasing their tipping fees. They charge to us because they have their labor costs and their program costs and their equipment costs, so their rates have gone up as well. Uh, either every year or every other year. Um, so, so we, again, that, that's, but we're guessing here on. That two hundred and fifty tons is an estimate based on what our average has been over the last, I don't know, say, five years.
Um, so David, I think one of the things that you might have been asking is, why is it that the city has two charges they face and you only have one charge? That you face? Is that kinda the core of your question?
Yes, it is. I I was just kinda wondering why, why they were worried about the, these other fees. And and I wasn't trying to accuse anybody of anything, or you know, I just, how are we gonna look at this?
I I think I have, I I mean, I can't say for sure, because I I'd need to look at Sunshine's numbers to know why it is that way for them as a business. But I I think I have a pretty good theory as to why. Inherently, if the, if you are. Sunshine and the the costs that you have is, you have a cost of going and getting people's garbage. And then you have a cost of getting rid of the garbage once you have it in your possession, right? The city.
Right.
Getting both of those charges separately, the cost. Getting both of those charges separately, the cost of what it takes to come and get our garbage, and the cost of what it takes for them to get rid of our garbage. And it works out pretty well, because even though they're getting all of our individual garbages, the city is still the one who pays the bill. Right? So at the end of the day, when they dump that truck, they know that everything on that truck was from us. So they can track back our weight perfectly, to say, for the customer of the city of Harrington, how much weight did they contribute? They weigh the whole truck in and out, they know how much weight there was. For your dumpster, they're probably coming around and getting your dumpster, and my parents' dumpster, and a whole bunch of other people's dumpsters. And at the end of the day, when they weigh the truck in and they weigh the truck out, they can't, they can't know how much weight you contributed to it. So they're probably making an average to say, this is how much weight we think you're probably contributing on average. If you put concrete in, you're probably coming out slightly ahead. If you put in feathers, and you're coming out way behind. They're saying, saying, we'll probably say eighty percent of possible weight, or something like that. Because there's no way for them to track the weight back per customer. But for the city, because the trash in that truck is all the city's trash, they can know exactly what that weight is. And so that's why we get the two charges, but they're having to endure two separate costs. They're just combining them into one for you, because they can't separate it.
Alright, okay, well, that's very good. Thanks, Justin, and thanks, Stephen. Um, I I got another question for Stephen, though, it seems like you've dug into this pretty good. What is our average, uh, tonnage, or what, our city, have we seen an increase, decrease? Uh, stay the same over, say, the last couple of years? Does any numbers on that? By any chance, for how much we dump, you know, the tonnage that we get charged for? I know around Christmas, it probably goes up, you know, or cer- certain times of the year, probably in the middle of summer. You know, around holidays, fourth of July, you know, stuff like that, probably a little less. But I was just kind of curious if anybody, where you, uh, we'd even have a record of that, to see, see the usage, how much.
Where we do. But I'm getting, it's one of the, it'll be a lot easier to pull out when everything's in bias, and we can just pull a report on that. In the meantime, I'm guessing it'd have to be manually compiled.
Yeah, correct.
Na- Nathan, did you change the two hundred and fifty tons at all?
No, I did not. So that that was changed from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, it went up. Uh, that that amount was changed, but it has not been changed.
If I remember when doing those. Again, I looked at the numbers, trying to see, trying to figure out a mathematical way to 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 estimate that, and it might have been two thirty-eight one year, and then two forty-four. And and so there was an increase, and I I think we might have went from maybe two forty-eight. To two fifty, knowing that, the other thing is, I mean, we have recycling. But they don't recycle glass here anymore, they don't recycle plastic, some plastic, so we can't recycle as much as we used to. And that's going to go in the trash, and then just be wait, uh, wait for the tipping fee, so. So there is, David, there are numbers, I mean, when I looked at them, I mean, I looked at the bills. This was two years ago, and last year, to get to the numbers that I that that Nathan was then using, that was based on. Uh, looking back at several years, I don't have those numbers with me now, but they they are available. But they, like Stephen said, they're manu- they had to be manually derived.
Right. Well, I I just kind of curious with the the pandemic restrictions and stuff, and. And school not being open, and I just wonder where our numbers were, and compare, are we generating? Uh, where they were, or what we're seeing, just out of curiosity more than anything, but seeing what, uh. You know, what we're facing there, and it probably doesn't matter much, but, um, I I you guys explained it, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, it sounds like we have a pretty good understanding there, we can, I don't know if we need to end up circling back to, uh, the recommendation as far. I mean, Stephen and Justin, you guys both kind of hinted some numbers there, um, or kind of how to go about it. Um, we want to go some more, talk some more on that, after we circle around with the salaries and and the. Inactive rates as well, we can, but, uh, for the time being, I want to move on, that gives. Me definitely comfortable situations, as far as where where to go with that stuff, so. I want to move on to inactive rate stuff.
What line, what line is that on, Nathan, uh, interesting? Inactive rates.
The rates, so you're gonna be on. I gotta find it here.
I got mine printed out, and I'm looking at it on paper, and I just wondered.
Well, David, it's not the budget line items, it would be the separate attachment, that says utility rate analysis, that that page.
I didn't get, uh, what was that again, Justin, what'd you call it? Anticipated?
A utility rate analysis, it's a separate document. Right, I guess.
Yeah, you should have got three documents in that email.
Okay, well, all I received, guys, was something, uh, open it up, and there's six pages to it.
That's the budget itself.
Okay, okay, yeah, so that's why I was kind of. Would, if anybody had that, could they send that to me, uh, while we're while we're discussing stuff, I mean.
Cause I sent the same one to everybody, it's just you gotta back out into that email, and click on a different attachment. So the first attachment is the six pages, and then there's another attachment, there's two others. So it's in that same email, you should see it right next to it.
Okay.
I'll mail it to you now, though, David, by itself, just.
Alright, appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
So we've talked quite a bit about this, um, since I've been involved in beforehand, but. I want to hear kind of your guys' final thoughts on this, um, as far as, we've talked about. The inactive rates for certain, um, certain buildings and and places that. That, uh, aren't inhabited, I guess. Um, I've definitely heard the argument of, well, even though tho- some of those. Resources, like to say the water isn't being used, you know, they should get a discounted rate, or or maybe. That should be available, because they're not using their five thousand gallons of water. And do you see that point? I also have seen the the contrary on the other side of, you know, some of this has to play into the infrastructure part of it. Yeah, it's not being used, the the sewers maybe not being used, because there's nobody there, or the five thousand gallons of water, however. There's still, there's some infrastructure costs that's there for just being hooked up. And that's essentially, I think, what was maybe done in the first place about these inactive fees, was that, well, that's just the. The amount that you're be, that you're paying to have the availability to use those. So I see both sides. I kind of want to hear your guys' thoughts on our arguments, maybe for, if you're in favor of. Getting rid of the inactive fees and going to full fees, or vice versa. I think that we can all see that there's costs, a lot of costs associated with these. Uh, whether they're being used or not being used, and, uh, frankly, I'm in favor of of. The inactive fees, at least changing, or going just to full fees, to have the availability to use them. So what's your guys' thoughts on on that?
I'll chime in on that, Nathan, this is Peter.
Okay.
Uh, from the very beginning of this discussion, I've favored a reduced fee for inactive accounts. Uh, it applies to other utilities as well, like. Uh, I just think it's patently unfair to be charging a person full fare. When he or she is not using, uh, the water. I would favor leaving it just the way it is, and moreover, I would add to that. That if we change it and increase the fee for inactive accounts, it's going to be a. A sudden change for a lot of, well, a handful of citizens, unwelcome, and. I I think if we change it, we should. Uh, postpone the change until several months in the future. But I favor leaving, uh. Leaving the fee structure the same as it is currently.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I'll say from a, a, um, community development perspective. Right now, there there is no. I don't know what the right word is here, but there's no.
It's seven o'clock.
Sorry, there's no, um, motivation, I guess, and that's the wrong word, but. Incentive for them not to do anything, so I think two years ago, when we had this discussion, um. A couple building owners came in and said, well, wait a second, we're we're actively, um, working on our buildings, and this is a way to help us. Limit our costs while we're renovating, and that that's a valid argument, but in the two years that that happened. The buildings that were in question, nothing has happened. So we are incentivizing them to do nothing, and we have several buildings downtown that could be. Say renovated, or or transferred to somebody who wants to do it, but right now, there's no incentive for them to do that. They say there's no cost. For me to, I don't, it doesn't matter, the cost right now is so low, I can use the building, to say, um. For storage, uh, there's one example, um, the old Challenger Cafe. The person that previously owned it, said, I'm not willing to sell it to somebody that's just going to store things in there. I mean, I, that was his right as a citizen, as a building owner, as a property owner, and I appreciated that. I mean, as a, as a business owner downtown, that's wanting, you know, um, to see change happen here. And to get people motivated to do things, so right now, though, there's no motivation for them to do that. They don't have to, they're, they don't, um, it's relatively low, uh, for them, and. Uh, Stephen has brought this up before, you know, from an equity standpoint, the rest of the city, then, the citizens, everyone else, is paying that. They're ki- they're they're paying the load, um, for those people. So strictly from a community development standpoint, just looking at the, from a commercial, the commercial district, not even considering houses or not. You know, I think, um. I I would be in favor of it, just because I think it helps spur development, or redevelopment, or renovation type of things.
Okay.
I'll go next. So, three components, water, sewer, and garbage. For the sewer, my understanding is, and I'm still within my first year of being on council, and. Sewer stuff is a huge rat hole of of information to try and understand, but my current understanding. Is that it, that if we were to use less sewer as a city. It would cost us more, because of the economies of scale and the way that it works out for the treatment and everything. I believe Justin said a meeting or two ago, that using less sewer actually costs us more than using more sewer. So therefore, those who use less sewer are costing the city more than those who use more sewer. So saying that the sewer rate should be the same for inactive buildings as active buildings, I feel is being very generous. Because it's saying that they are contributing to more costs, but yet we are charging them the same as anyone else. So I think keeping the sewer rate the same is eminently fair. Given the fact that it really doesn't matter, in my mind, what other utilities do or anything else. The fact of the matter is, as I said before, every cost that the city incurs is a distributed cost amongst all the citizens. So it is incumbent upon us to try and distribute that in a way that is reflective of how each person contributes towards those costs. Justin.
Even real quick, when you say the same, do you mean unchanged, or the rates should be identical?
They should be identical.
Okay, thank you.
And I feel that's very generous, considering the fact that I think there's an argument that could be made. That a person who's not using sewer is costing the sewer, the city more than a person who is, and therefore, you should have a higher sewer rate if you're not using it. So I think keeping it equal is actually very generous on the city's part, to my current understanding of it. With water, uh, what I would. Want to consider more than anything else, I guess, is getting rid of perhaps the the five thousand. Free gallons as a part of it, lowering the costs. Accordingly, and then setting all of the rates to that cost. So instead of getting your first five thousand gallons for free, because I think the best argument of equity is. If if part of your base rate includes five thousand free gallons of water. Then if you're going to use zero gallons of water, you're paying for five thousand dollar, five thousand gallons that you won't use. And if we shut off their water, if we actually, this was one of the biggest things I learned, is that we actually go and turn off the water, right? So they don't even have the option of using five thousand gallons that's part of their due. I don't think that's very fair, if if they're paying for that five thousand gallons, it shouldn't be shut off. They should even be able to use those five thousand gallons that's available to them. Therefore, we should just make it so that everyone pays a amount of a thousand, you know, gallons. Costs X like it does today. We reduce people's rates by a certain amount to get to the base cost, that all accounts, active and inactive, have that same. Starting point, and then what you pay beyond that simply is on what gallons you use. And I know, I, Justin, I, maybe where you're going is the whole encouraging people to use water in the winter time. Um, that's a thought there, I've I've heard the argument before, but. Um, there is an infrastructure cost for water involved, that when we reduce. The rates for an inactive account below what it would cost if the water, you, the gallons. Uh, included were removed, then we are going underwater on the infrastructure costs that we're trying to recoup. And lastly, I'll shut up by saying, I've been an advocate of saying that I don't think there should be a garbage requirement generally, so. And currently, inactive accounts are not required to have garbage, so those are the three components in my mind.
Stephen, real quick, um, I don't know everything about it, but it would take, it would take a lot of research. But I know currently, based on the grants and the loans that we have in place, especially for the ones that we just received. We had to submit what our water rates were, and that's how based on our ability to repay was. So if we, I think, trying to, uh, at least right now, today, um, or or not today. But in in next week at our budget hearing, I don't think that's enough time, honestly. To be able to look at actually reducing the rates of of everybody for water, uh, as a lower rate, and then have it as a usage.
When you say rate, are you talking about rate per gallon, or rate at minimum?
Flat rate that we have right now, those rates are submitted to our lender for, and the grant folks. And so there's a, they look at what our ability is to 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 pay and repay. So I think that you would have to look at contacting those those folks. Uh, our grant, our grant folks, and our our lend, the lenders that we have, in saying, is this something that we can do? Because I think there are ramifications of, we wouldn't, we might fall out of compliance, or they say you you can't do it. So before you go too far, uh, let's potentially lower rates. Um, I think we'd have to do a lot more research to understand that, and I'm not saying I'm against it. But I just think from a pure, what our ability actually is, uh, we have some obligations, that we might not be able to do that, especially within a week.
That's fair, just to be clear, though, that when I, the word lower. Uh, this is a very contrived example, but if you do use through the winter exactly five thousand gallons every month. This would not constitute any lowering of the rates, just because it it's just changing. That there's no five thousand free gallons, it would be reduced only by the cost of five, one thousand dollar. Cost of of gallon usage, so I just want to be clear on that, that in the course of, you know. When we're talking about trying to cover increased costs and salaries and this type of stuff, I'm, I don't see it as a general lowering of the rate. I see it as a restructuring at the same general price points, but to Justin's point. We may not have the flexibility to be able to do that, I acknowledge that, so.
Well, I'd be willing to explore that, too, to find out to what Justin's saying, and what you're saying as well. Um, timing, obviously, this would be something that I think we'd we would have to tackle on the new year, but. I'd be willing to do that, to re, maybe restructure that, to help us, uh, cover some of the costs that we. We encourage the city going forward, and not not necessarily lower the rates, but restructure them.
The the other thing about the winter things, the gallons, the usage there, we don't read the meters, and so we don't pay a person to go do that in the winter.
Oh, true, so that wouldn't be applicable to this restructuring, then?
So, I don't, and I don't know why, I, uh, long before I've been here, um. That was put in place, I don't know if it was to encourage people using water in the. That was put in place, I don't know if it was to encourage people using water in the winter, so the, the pipes don't freeze, like our city's pipes or.
That's what I was told.
Um, but again, or if it was a cost thing too, like, hey, we're not gonna have somebody go out and read meters in the winter. Uh, with snow or trying to do that, so, um, that's a cost that we don't have right now. So if we want to do that, I mean, that could be, it's a, it's a shift. But there are several components that we want to look at that are probably gonna take, I'd say, longer than this week, so.
How, how much are they billed in the winter, Justin, or Nathan? Or is it for water? Since we don't read them, is it just an average of what they did, or the, or does it stand?
Thirty-six, it's the, it's the base rate that they're charged in the summer, but in the summer, you're, you're given the five, I think it's five thousand gallons. So if you use more than that, then you get charged additional in the winter.
Usage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but the winter time.
So the winter, it's just base rate, correct?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, okay, thanks. Well, I was kind of wondering about that, but makes sense.
Can I interject something? I'm, I'm not a part of the council, I'm just one of the people here watching over. I live on a street and there are eight houses or eight parcels in my, on my street on Second Avenue. Five of which are occupied. That mean, three of them are not occupied and they're not contributing, and. It's too cheap to own a property in this town to not use. Uh, it would be better served to have more people in this town, to have those. Utilities used and more contribution. And, and if it takes, meaning those utility rates have to be bumped up for those properties that are not active. Do it, give them some incentive to do something with them instead of having them sit and become a. What do we call it? A, an attractive nuisance. My opinion, it's a problem.
Well, to add into that, keep in mind, one of the first meetings I attended in, in recent renewal of attending meetings. Uh, Lynn Bailey was there to talk about her thoughts on rate increases, which were. She had very strong opinions on that, and a number of council members who also had been open to the concept of, of. Keeping inactive rates low, were also very receptive to the concerns about increasing rates on people like Lynn. If the cost of delivering on our utilities keeps going up, then I would bear the question out, who should bear those costs? Someone like Lynn, or someone who has the finances to own a building. That they are not actively using. I, I mean, you don't get to examine all these things in a vacuum, there's costs we have to bear. Someone's gonna have to pay the cost. Unfortunately, short of the city having a large endowment. To sit off of and figure out how we play Santa Claus to people with that money, we're gonna have to figure out how do we distribute the costs around. And that means unfortunately, the city is in the unenviable position of trying to figure out what is the most equitable, equitable way. Of distributing those costs, so. Reasonable people can come to a disagreement on how that works, but just keep in mind, it's, it's a balance in terms of who's going to get hit. For cost increases over the years, so.
I got a question for you, Stephen, and, and the mayor, or the whole group. By, by doing this, I see both sides and concerns, but is there any legalities associated with this in any way? Of charging people for a service that's not being provided or, or used? Is there anything? That we have to look out for that, that aspect?
I know of off the top of my head, I mean, obviously, we've talked about some other utilities. Uh, you know, say Vista or Gas or Power, something like that, you know, there's base charges on everything. As far as what that base charge can be, I, I don't know that, that's something that we'd have to look at.
Right, well, it's, it's nothing unlike, like I said in one of the prior meetings, how. Everybody's, the utility of Esther, Inland Power, or such, or even the phone company has a Kodek fee, and. Whether you live there or not, if it's connected, or you, whether you use it, you're charged that base fee, and uh. You know, that, that's my only issue, if, if you're not using it, um, you know. I, I see both sides, and I, and I really want to vitalize downtown, and that's why I asked, uh, prior meeting. Uh, we have about what, nine inactive accounts right now? Is that correct, Nathan?
I think the number we've been using, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's, it's, we've been using around fifteen. That's total, and I don't know, that's not just downtown, I believe that's throughout the city.
Yeah, well, we want to replace a lot of meters, that does affect these inactive accounts as well, doesn't it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, 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 that answer, thank you.
And, and you brought up a good point too, I mean, as far as the base, the, the hookup fees or the, the base rate. In a sense, other than what Stephen's talked about a little bit with the five thousand gallons for the water part of it. We, we as a citizen at your house are paying a base rate, I mean, that is the base rate. For being hooked up to sewer, being hooked up to water, um, and having the garbage, which is. Kind of irrelevant at this point as far as whether you have it or not, but my question would be. Should we and do we want to allow that base rate or that hookup fee? To be less for people that aren't using it, and that's, that'd be my argument towards it. Um, yeah, the water can be shut off and you're, you're not using those five thousand gallons, but you, you are hooked up, you should still have that base rate. Same with the sewer.
Yeah, it's like your phone in your house, you jerk it off the wall and throw it in the garbage, but you still are hooked up to the house, you get, you get nailed.
Yeah.
Um, just so I'm, I'm clear too, and I know this probably goes back a ways, but I, I. But I'd say back in the nineties, somewhere late nineties, early two thousand maybe. That we're talking about mandatory garbage, you, you have to pay for garbage whether you use it or not. That was what I was told back in the day. In clarification, is that apparently, I've heard it thrown out several times during the meeting here. That it, it was optional or something. Back then, uh, we did, if I'm not mistaken, you didn't have a choice. You paid for whether you use it or not. Does anybody, were they on here long enough to remember any of that?
I don't remember what it used to be, but garbage is mandatory these days unless you are in an active account. And uh, I, I had brought up separately, although I'm not really campaigning on this, because I, I don't necessarily know that there's been any. Anyone to join me on this, but I don't believe that garbage should be a mandatory thing. But I think.
Is there, is there any, okay, go ahead, I, sorry, sorry, Stephen.
No, no.
Yourself, Stephen, just have that thought to yourself.
I, I, I just got a quick question, is there any inactive accounts that are not using sewer and gar, sewer and water? But are using garbage service? Maybe have a que, answer to that one?
I don't have.
I would say probably not, but. Well, I was just thinking, you know, like some of the stuff downtown, somebody's, you know, do, they're inactive, but they still have a garbage pickup.
I don't know that off the top of my head, that'd be Janice's question for sure.
But, but that would, that would, that would strongly influence my decision, how, how we go forward with inactive accounts. And like I said, I, I'm on the fence, be honest with you, I'm on the fence, because I can understand both sides, as a city, the budget. And what we want to do, we want to promote, uh. Going forward businesses, definitely, at all due cost. And, and uh, if somebody just sits there on it and it's abandoned and never gonna, I mean, I don't know, to be honest with you. It, it could go either way, but I, I strongly agree with, um. Obviously, we're gonna have to do something, I can't be on the fence, but how much or what we're gonna do, and that's, I guess that's, we're pounding this out, so. I'll yield the floor to you guys, go ahead.
I struggle with the argument of development because. That, from what I've heard, when, when citizens came in with concerns about potential changes to this. They view the reduced rates as a part of development. Not saying that I do, but I'm saying they view it as that, it was said that the, the low rates are what helps them renovate the building. And so they view this as because they have a lower rate, they have more money to, to maintain the building and develop it. And turn it into something good, so to, I'm, I don't really buy that argument personally. But when you talk about what's going to do economic development, I think it's just worthy of note that. There are those in the community that would take that same goal and actually use it the other direction. To me, that's why I look at things more on a question of what costs money and what doesn't cost money. And, you know, like what I said about the sewer, if it's true that using less sewer costs more than using more sewer. Then that means that those who use less sewer, there's no mathematical financial justification for giving them a lower rate. To me, I think we, we're better off making arguments on the math. And, and on the equity than on what do we think is going to stimulate economic development. I would agree with those who think that it should, there should be an opportunity cost, okay, I'm not against that argument. I'm just saying I don't think it's an argument, I think it's one that's gonna get bogged down. When more of the community who have historically have concerns with this come to bear on it. And it, it could kind of churn on that issue, but my two cents.
Right.
If I may interject. I, um, I came to this town because I liked it, and when I saw the price of living here. That was very attractive. But what the number you're talking about, coming from a background that does development. And on a big scale. You're talking, I think, about a thousand dollars or so, I have a hard time believing that at least residential improvement. Is going to be stifled by a difference of a, of a couple thousand dollars. I mean, I know guys that put that into the bathtub, so, um.
I agree with you, Joe, but I, I don't think it's gonna stop people from trying to make the argument, is all I'm saying.
And it's, and it's a great argument, and there's a, this is a great town, and it's a great town to retire, it's a great ti, uh, town to have. A limited income to live in, and I think that, there's, there's a, there's a fine mix. Of being able to preserve that, because the last thing I did, I come from the west side, ten years ago. I came from there, and I've seen the growth, and it's gotten even worse since I left. Nobody wants that here, but if you don't do something to, uh. Stifle it or control it, it's gonna happen here, and. I, I think we want to preserve that small town feel, but it's still be prosperous.
This is Peter, who's speaking, please, I don't recognize the voice.
That's because I had to speak very much, Peter, Joe Armand.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we have enough input here, um.
Nathan, this is Levi, can I interject now?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, when it comes to this, I have a rather cold heart. We as a city are neither a business nor a charity. This isn't about us getting money to take vacations somewhere or to buy a new jet for the city, we need, we're talking about this because we need the money. It, it just, it kind of flabbergasts me when we talk about it like this and we go back and forth. The money is necessary to run the city, it, it's not, um, a luxury for us, and. Trying to think of a nice way to word this, but. You don't necessarily have, owning property in a town is a privilege. And with it comes responsibility, and if you can't. Come up with the money to keep up your end of bargain. Should, well, you should consider not having the property. Sounds really cruel and cold, I know, but at the same time, we need the money, I am for bringing all the rates up to the same level. I don't see any reason to keep it down.
Okay, thank you.
And if, this is David, I got a quick question, this is specifically addressing, this is specifically addressing inactive accounts, right? We're not talking in this discuss, okay, okay, I just want to make that clear to everybody, you know, for the record.
Yeah, no, this, this is gonna depend on what we interject as a number into the budget, so. I mean, it's hard to at this point, change that number going forward, saying, yeah, we're gonna raise it, and then. Our inactive account, and we can count on that money, and maybe that goes into the budget, and then it doesn't happen. However, that's, I mean, it's, one, it's been, it's been a topic for a long time, but second of all. Um, to, to Levi's point, I guess, of, of the money, um, and passing along what we need to, to the citizens to pay. Um, for everything else in the city, yeah, it's needed, um, it's also a point of, um. It's a point of. Of being hooked up, if you're hooked up, you should pay the same amount.
Yeah. So, uh, so my question is, um, we got nine accounts roughly, plus or minus. And we're looking to raise them up to the base rate of an active account, is that correct? Is that what we're gonna be voting on, or what we want, is that our goal, or what we're proposing?
Just on sewer and garbage, an active account usually also. Constitutes garbage as well, and I believe what I'm hearing from everyone is that. An inactive account, the only way that would be relevant is that we would still allow these businesses to not have a garbage can, or is it the council's discussion? That they would be forced to have a garbage can as well?
Okay, yeah, that was back to my earlier discussion, it was mandatory, but.
The previous, I mean, we talked about before as a council, has been specifically only for water and sewer.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, like you've said, there's an opportunity, I mean, we, we have an infrastructure cost no matter what, with garbage. We, they're not, there's, we're not being charged by either the hauler or by the tip, by the, the county for tipping, for weight. So there's no, there's no additional cost there for us at this point.
Right, there's no, there's no ongoing charge for that, okay.
So the, the two times that we've, I mean, the last two years is, is, this would be the third time that we've discussed it. Uh, because we've raised the rates too, over time, all rates, including inactive, but it's only been for inactives being the water and the sewer. That, that's regardless, I mean, right or wrong, or, I mean, that's, that's the fact of what we've done before, if that's. I, I had no intention, or, or my discussion was not to change that, but if somebody else wants to bring that forward, I mean, I, I'm indifferent to it, I don't. But I, talking about equity and inequity, I don't know that that's fair to charge them when there is no opportunity. There's no infrastructure cost that the city is bearing by them not having a garbage account.
Yeah, and I agree, I'd be okay with that, the only thing that comes into play with me for the garbage is the fact of. The salaries and the man hours, so. The only thing that comes up that I think about is, is moving trash cans back and forth, I think if we, when we address that, the garbage part of it. Or the whole inactive rate in general is to not have this week on, week off, well, I'm gonna be gone for a week, and I don't want to pay for the garbage can, that's gonna have to be. A month by month, or we're gonna have to figure out something there so that we're not spending a million hours. But that's my only thought on the garbage part at least. Did that answer your question, David?
Oh, yeah, yes, it does, Nathan, yes, it does.
So this brings me to the bottom line question for me at this point in the year for the budget. Do we want to budget? Is it a wise idea to budget that extra money, or I don't want to say extra, that's misleading, but that additional money. Of the inactive accounts being a, a, what I would call full active price in twenty twenty-one.
Well, so technicality purposes, Nathan, this is, uh, we're not making decisions here, so.
Right.
You can present a budget next week with that in there, you've heard what people have said here. You've, you know, from the five council members in the, in the, at least one public member has spoken tonight, um, so I would go ahead and. If it was me, I would take what you heard tonight and do what you want to do, then to present that next week, uh, that we will then adopt. The budget with those numbers or without those numbers.
Yeah.
So you two, I think you, it's your. So you two, I think you, it's your, it's your prerogative as the mayor to present a budget and. Not say defend it, but you'll know if you decide to go one way or the other. And there are some council members here that are on one side and some are on the other, and that's what. I mean, that that's what your, your luxury is being the mayor, your, your gift. Your, your uh, is to pick that, but to take what you heard, the input you heard tonight. And and make that so then when you wanna present it for uh, the council to vote on.
Fair enough, well taken, right, yep, I understand that, okay.
Are we required to have a public hearing to change these rates?
I believe so.
So my advice to you then would be to not put a budget forward that assumes the result of a public hearing.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think the public hearing becomes a foregone conclusion and citizens could. Rightly question why the public hearings happening at all, if there's the assumption that the feedback's not necessary. However, the expenditures and how the rest of the budget goes is not necessarily. You can make your own conclusions about how we end up at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Let me put it that way.
Well, the other, the other beauty to it is that. We have the ability to amend budgets, so. If it's presented one way and taken that way and then something changes either, either way, we can then amend, but. Okay, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate that. I know that's been a hot, uh, I don't know that I'd say a hot topic, topic, but a topic for some time and. I want to get to the bottom of it one way or another.
So Nathan, what about? Do you want a straw poll? From the council about general utility rates? But we talked about garbage already, talked about inactive rates, but uh, in last, at the last council meeting, we talked about what the. The inactive rates would do if those did change, but is there any need for discussion? For general utility rates? Uh, or say water and sewer for? Or is is regardless of, you know, maybe you say, hey, if we use that inactive rate and that gets bumped up. If if that does happen, that equals this and therefore. It it uh, we don't therefore need a utility rate increase this year, or it can be, it could have been five percent, but now we can do one percent or. I don't, I don't know what your, you have them here, so on the, you you gave, I said, I don't know if you wanna have a discussion or. If you're, excuse me, if you're good or.
So I would say. I am comfortable. At this point of where the rates are currently at, um, obviously. If the inactive rates happen to go to a full rate, that's gonna help. That's gonna help even more. I don't see anything at this point that's alarming to where I s- I think that we, holy smokes, we need to raise the rates, the the regular active rates. Um, but I'm absolutely open for discussion if anyone has anything as far as their thoughts on that. Um, we do have some stuff that could potentially be in the works for our, our wastewater treatment plant. Now do we proactively plan for that? And raise the rates or do we wait and see what happens with those choices, what the council decides on, on that and then. Uh, reactively. Adjust our rates accordingly.
Listen, Peter.
Good, Peter.
I would recommend that we keep in mind that we're in uncertain economic times and any change should. Take into account citizens' ability to pay. Um, I don't know what the unemployment or employment situation is in the town, but my impression is people. Are losing jobs and not earning the kind of money that has been the case in the past. So I think any decision that's made has to take that into account.
And I see your point there, Peter. However, I disagree a little bit just for the fact that. Regardless, and like to Levi's point earlier, it sounds cold, but regardless of what happens. There as far as jobs and and income, we know that our, our. Our costs as a city are only gonna go up. We know that things, inflation of of equipment, fuel, whatever the price, whatever the, the. Uh, item might maybe salaries, I mean, all that, so I'd, I'd be, I guess I'd caution or. Just to make that point aware that we know that our costs are gonna at least stay the same and almost guarantee. To go up a little bit at some point.
Hey, I'd like to add something. I agree with uh, Councilman Davenport on a few issues. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, but uh, but if we take into account the retirees here. That I think uh, Joe uh, Citizen brought up, like to live here, retire here, a lot of them are on fixed budgets. How is the city addressing that, the people that don't have the ability to. Uh, get a raise or, you know, afford it. Are we, are they getting a break or is there an organization that helps that out? Or um, are people getting reduced rates now because of income in the city?
So there, there are a few remaining. Um, to answer your question simply, no, there's, there's nothing different. There are some. Um, I believe some remaining stuff from previous administrations that had some kind of a discounted rate. Um, but currently going forward, no, there, there's nothing of that nature. If, if those services are being used, there's a rate and that rate is, I mean, as it stands now, there's either inactive if you're not using it or active if you're using it.
Well, uh, my concern is our constituents here, w- what's, what do we, what answer do we give them? When that, when that were called on the carpet, uh, for the reason, yeah, we'll tell them, you know, costs is going up, but how does that help them? I mean, these are all uh, questions I think we would be, should be prepared in the future. Uh, to answer, you know, and and a lot of ways, just saying, well, costs went up, lump it or like it, move, or I mean. I I don't have the answers, but I I was just a meeting of the minds here. What what would you tell them? What would a person tell them?
I would, I would tell them that we are gonna do everything in our power as a council and as a mayor, as a city in general. To obviously do the best job we can curbing as many costs as we can, however. That bottom line, dollar amount, whatever it costs us to provide services. That's what we, like, you just made the point, we have to redistribute those costs. So we can make effort to do better at that. I mean, I mean, any business or a city or any municipality should and can do that to some extent, but there's still gonna be a bottom line dollar. That it costs us to run as a city.
Yeah, i- if I was asked on that, I would say something to the fact that my responsibility towards constituents and trying to address such problems. Are that I try to address aggressively cut our costs as much as I can. Because at the end of the day, once we've gotten things as efficient as we can get them. We're not a charity and we don't redistribute people's wealth. We try to, we try to pass on the costs as as we have them to the best of our ability and if it's, if it exceeds what some people can afford. That is most unfortunate, cause I don't wanna see anyone have to leave Harrington, but. Some people had to leave San Francisco because they couldn't afford San Francisco. Some people leave Seattle because they couldn't afford Seattle. And while I hope that we can always be a town that's affordable to everyone, we aren't held. We cannot be held hostage by the income sources people do or don't have. We try to run the most efficient organization we can. And I hope, you know, my involvements and trying to say, you know, let's get rid of unused CenturyLink lines, let's get rid of unused properties, let's. Try and cut, you know, I think many of us have been pretty aggressive in trying to push into new areas of cost cutting that we haven't before. And that only op- opens more opportunity for us to lower costs or at least um, keep from raising costs down the line. But once we've ran out of those options, it is what it is.
I agree.
Well, so. This is David, uh, one more thing for the Budget Committee here. Is these properties uh, that we wanna sell, has any numbers been run on the future or potential tax base increase? In revenue we would, we would receive in doing so?
No, no, that's definitely well beyond where we're at right now as far as time, but no.
Well, uh, well, I understand that. I know that was way in the future, but I just wanted to add that to keep, I guess, maybe on the back burner. Uh, when we decide stuff and and uh, moving forward to keep the costs down, that might relieve some of the burden. You know, it won't do it right, right now at this moment, obviously, but in the future, it could definitely, it will assist in our budget process, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So if I can interject real fast to expand on what Stephen said, as much as keeping costs down, the businessman in me says. You've gotta increase your revenue and you gotta do it ethically. I want the people to stay. I like them. I I work at the food bank, I meet them all the time. These are good people and. Whatever we can do to, eh, as a community to expand, quite honestly, the tax base. So that they are not being burdened by having to. Take care of everything that's going on in this town, which is a small town. Eh, I think we need to do, and and that's why, you know, like I said, do expand on what Stephen said. Uh, I I think there's a lot more we can do, that's all.
Okay.
Well, and and to Peter's point, and one of the things I think we talked about in the Budget Committee. And I'll, I'll bring it up here. Is that a number of towns have gotten to the point of having a regular expectation of increase. And I think that to a certain extent are. Uh, will increase this year and not next year type situation. I don't know if that necessarily benefits us in the long run. Um, I think it would be better for us to find and pick. A a rate of a, of an expecta- uh, expected increase year over year, and it could be a very low rate. Maybe we have a minimum baseline of a point five percent. Think of it as a cost of living increase. That's a concept that most people have that's like, we, we acknowledge the inflation. And think the price of things keeps going up, so to say that we expect that things will be at least zero point five percent, I'm throwing a number out there, I'm not. Fixing to it, but it will be at least this amount more every single year. To have a baselines instead of years that we increase and years that we don't increase. I think is, is at least good to start talking about the messaging of it, even if we don't put it in place this year. However, to Peter's point, I kind of look at these budget considerations in two different groups. One, I think we're having to raise some of these rates to put out some fires. We've got things like the garbage fund going in the hole. We've got things like, uh, you know, the, the question of how are we able to fund salary increases and those are things that I am. More concerned with immediately doing regardless of the state of the pandemic. However, things that are more towards the idea of setting us up for the future. Of a little bit of a rate increase every year, whether it is immediately emergency needed or not. Might be something that it could be a better idea to try and hold off until actually implementing that in summertime, once some of the pandemic has passed. I don't think that some of the more optional things, and to be clear, I I I say, you know, I think historically we've. Only increased rates when we've needed to. And this is not a strategy, it's a, it's something that sounds great for government, but I don't think any of us would want to try and operate a household budget that way. Because what it ends up is that you don't generally have funds to do what you need when emergencies come up. And you don't get to buy better quality tools when they come up. Like, we're fortunate to be able to get a plow that's in a really good situation for really cheap, but if it was. Gonna be uh, used, i- if it was gonna be uh, priced for what otherwise would be worth, we might not be able to afford it just because we don't have the money in the bank to get it, right? So it is good, in my opinion, for the city to have a surplus on hand to effectively use our money correctly. And that surplus is not talking about a large S that we're, we're afflicting the people with. Because that comes in expenditures. If we're spending the money stupidly, then it's a problem. But if we have um, some money on hand for emergencies and for investing properly. It is good for the city to have a little bit of a surplus, cause in the long run, that co- costs our constituents less. Than if we run around with our hair on fire every time we have a budgetary problem and like the pickup had a motor that blew. And now, you know, a lot of cities will perhaps can entertain debt for that. And I think most of our council members, including myself, are very debt averse. Well, you don't, you can choose to have the minimum amount of tax rates. Or you can go into debt when an unexpected cost comes in. You don't get to really have it both ways. You don't get to have it that way in your personal checkbook. You don't get to have it that way in your city tech, uh, checkbook, so. That's why when I say it's good for us to entertain a rate increase, whether we know we'll fully need it or not. It's because I think it will save our constituents money, not because I wanna have more money for the city to just throw around and play with wherever they wanna have it go, so.
Thank you. Point well taken. Thank you, guys. Feel like uh, rates, well, going forward, moving forward, are still gonna be uh, some lengthy conversations, but. I appreciate you guys giving your input on that. Um, moving along things here for this um, meeting. Wanna get into, so. What Justin said to the budget of presenting uh, numbers in the budget. Uh, can either be, you know, approved or or not approved type of deal. I take that a little more to heart now as far as going through each particular one, however, there is something that I have here. That I, I want some input, kind of a straw poll, if you will, or whatever you wanna call it, is um, is the health insurance. So just to give you guys some background, if you don't know, um. We pay, currently, we pay the entire employee's health insurance per month, so. Um, I think Justin could explain a little bit better, but as far as I know, we are in, are, it's, we are in a pool um, through A W C for health insurance. Um, I think Justin, you said they required at least five, maybe five participants at some point, we got some kind of a stipulation to where we could have less. However, um, currently, we are only paying um, just Scott's health insurance, so he's the only one signed up. Those costs increase, at least they have since I've been here, and I think they will continue to increase. So my question for this is, one, we know that we are gonna have another employee that's taking health insurance through the city next year. Um, that's just kind of an F Y I, but the, the part of the, that I wanna get to and to see your guys' opinion on. Um, on setting a, a ceiling, if you will, a cap on that. So where I work, I have an allowance each month for my health insurance. The county allows, gives me an allowance of six hundred dollars per month for my health insurance. Anything after that, whether it's just mine or whether I had three kids or however. That would, that would be on me, so and I'm looking at now wanting to. Get your opinions on setting a, a ceiling for that, a cap for that. Do we wanna go forward and just have to incur all of the costs for health insurance for each employee going forward? Or can we, do we, can we set a certain amount to pay and then after that, we can, the employee will incur that cost? Some of that, some of the other part of that is too, that we could talk about is putting some of that money. That we don't pay towards health insurance, potentially back into salaries or a portion of it. So that, to try to, to try to get those salary numbers maybe a little more competitive, competitive, so. My, my ask here is. What's your guys' thoughts on not paying the entire health insurance amount every month? Versus um, trying to put a cap on that or or choosing an amount to pay, we pay X amount, so mu- so much.
Question, Nathan, this is David.
Yep.
When, when you were referring to um, your analysis of your job, you get a. Six hundred dollars a month to go for health insurance. Does that mean, I wanna clarify, that. Would that mean at this time, we'll just talk about your, the current employee on it? If it's capped at six hundred, he could take that six hundred and go find else, uh, find insurance elsewhere, or is it still with the A W or the?
No, that would still be through our. No, that would still be through our, what we offer.
Okay. And he wouldn't have the option to take that six hundred dollar payment. Which alleviate the city of anything, or, um, you know, anything over that. I don't know what you can get for six hundred dollars anyways, so. Um, he would still be locked into having to go through the city's insurance with that proposal.
Yes, correct.
Correct?
So David, this is Justin too. So Na- Nathan referenced A W C. They have several, so we're a member of them as a city and they have several umbrellas. They have the. The, oh, an insurance arm and this and that. And so as a, as a member of them, we. Again, have some obligations to participate in some of these things like we get our, so they're, they insure us as a city. They, they cover our, uh, both is like liability insurance as well as property damage insurance, like, like say a homeowner's insurance type of thing. They ensure our buildings, they ensure our liability if somebody trips on the sidewalk. Um, and they also, then we have an insurance pool. Uh, and so that's the only option that we have. Um, Nathan's point on the cap, I don't know exactly what year it started, but I do have a, a, an idea of a baseline figure. That at least six years ago, and it could be a little longer, but the insurance was about six hundred dollars per person per month. Uh, this current year, it was eight hundred and eleven dollars. And now next year, it's going to be eight hundred and, as you say, forty dollars, I think.
Forty and some change, yep.
So it go, I mean, and those are just things that, but as a pool, so again, they take all. Two hundred plus cities that are members and, uh, go get that. Um, and so they, they, I, I don't even know if they self-insure, but, um, it's something that we, I would say is a good deal for the city. Because again, um, trying to go get private insurance for two people or three people. Which then they base it on the average of your age of your employees. Um, you know, but we right now collectively are part of this pool that might have a sixty-five or seventy-year-old employee. But then also as a twenty-one-year-old employee, you know, that say, um, somebody like in Sultan Washington, that might be a part of this as well. So we collectively have the average of thousands of employees for setting our rates. So we're not. If it was just us by ourselves with three people or, yeah, three employees or two employees, uh, the cost I, I, I. Would be astronomical and be a lot more than it is. So, um, and, and the reason this kind of came up. In one discussion at least, I think it came up in two, it came up in two committees. It came up in the handbook committee and it came up in the budget committee. But, um, the city currently, we, we're stuck every year. From a cost perspective, we don't know, but the city's on the hook. Um, for that, that number, if it goes up from eight hundred to eight, or eight eleven to eight forty, the city's on the hook. So. I know at least in the budget committee, the, the discussion that this came up with was it's a cap. And so we, from a budgetary purpose, the city can kind of count on every year a fixed cost. That our cost for this is only going to be X amount per employee and, you know, what we have. Um, the other thing that came up in our conversation that Nathan hinted on here or, or brought up or. Was at least in this first year, to make it equitable or to make it not a hit on the employees was to then say. If, if, if the amount that the increase in, or the cut in insurance from, say if we're going to pay eight, eight eleven or eight forty to six hundred. That we can redistribute that back into the employee's pay as a, as a wage rate this year. And going forward, uh, and it would, one, it would reset our rage, our, our rates higher, our wages higher. So. Um, going forward, they would be that. And this year it wouldn't be a big impact. It would be a net wa- it would be an, a wash to the city and to the employee. Because we're still paying that like we would. Um, but that way they're not, it's not a big sticker shock, but then going forward, if there's ever any changes. The next employee, they, they, they know that they're, this is the rate or the range of rates and for, for salary or for pay. And then here's what the insurance is.
And that's, you, you worded that well. That's exactly something, that's something that I kind of left out. That was, it would, this year wouldn't change much, but. I would like to have that number for health insurance going forward, whether, you know, we hire somebody in the future or whatever happens with. We can one, count on that number and two, that, that new employee will knew, know that coming in. Okay, the city of Harrington pays X amount for health insurance and here's my wage. They, they have both of those. Hard numbers to go with.
And I would also say.
Go ahead.
That Nathan's example from his current employment with the county, so I work for a, a bank and my employment is the same thing. So it, I don't get a hundred, but the bank does not pay a hundred percent of my insurance. Whether I was a single person or I have a family of four, they pay a certain percentage as an employee and say you're responsible for the rest. Um, I would say most of, I don't know about the other cities personally, what they do or don't do, but most. Of corporate America anymore anyway. I don't, I'm not very familiar with, um, those that pay a hundred percent. Of the employee, even the, just the, the employee's rate. Um, my father-in-law was a, a small business owner on the west side, had a business. He used to pay everybody's insurance. He, the insurance is a hyperinflation. I mean, across the board, health insurance is, is just gone up. Exponential every year, you know, every, over the last decade. And as a small business owner, he couldn't afford it. So he said, hey, same thing. We're going to cap it at what some number. I don't know what he chose, but that's what, you know, I, I mean, so it's not uncommon. Uh, and again, I don't know from a municipality standpoint, but at least in the rea- in the real world or the business world. It's not like it'd say it's unfair. I mean, that's, I think Stephen might say he has something similar. Nathan has something with the county. I have something, uh, in my employment as well. So just for whatever that's worth, it's not like we're going on a limb here. And trying something new that hasn't, it's not, doesn't exist in the market today. So.
All right. Well, well, that, that explains a lot. Thanks, Justin. And, uh, I got a question for Nathan. And I'll ask you is, as I understand it, this year, um, the clerk will be added shortly. How long, um, y- yester years, like a year, two ago, when Bunny was here? Was, was there more than one per, an employee on the insurance? Or how long is this one, how long has Scotty been the single one we're paying for?
One year, I believe.
Yeah. So last year, so I, I told this to Stephen and Nathan on our budget committee talks. Um, originally, there used to be three employees that were on our insurance. We had three employees and all three employees were, were covered. Um, when the clerk came on this year. Uh, apparently she didn't need, they had to have some exemption. They had to call and get a special exemption. Because again, we're in a pool and that they count on our numbers. Then later when we hired a new, uh, maintenance person, apparently that person doesn't take insurance and I don't, I don't know. I, I wasn't involved in that point, so I don't know what, why that was allowed, but previous years, a hundred percent of our employees have been covered by our insurance.
Okay. And I, I know that it was mentioned earlier here, uh, this is something that I've, I think we're hoping to address in the policy book too. Uh, certain things, but I'm not going to get into that now because we're on, we're on the budget here. But however, this scenarios are, are going to play out to some degree, yeah, uh, what we're looking at. And hopefully it'll be palatable to everybody, but I, I don't know. Yeah, well, we'll see what it, where it goes from there. So, well, well said, guys. Thank you for the answer.
I guess the one thing I would want to add, because, um, Nathan and Justin and I had a. Prolonged debate about some of the ins and outs about what this means. I'll summarize it to say that I, I would support this proposal. But I would encourage the city council to realize that as it is right now. The city bears the costs of increases year over year, one hundred percent. In my work scenario, when the costs of healthcare goes up, I bear some of the costs and my employer bears some of the costs. So it's like split, right? What we're talking about then is that while in this year, there will be some of the money that is what constitutes over the cap. Is then moved into their salaries and for this next coming year, it's a wash. But going forward, because of a cap, it's putting the co- the risk of increased healthcare costs on the employee. A hundred percent past that point. And, and I think that from a budgetary perspective, this is something we probably need to do. But I would use this as an opportunity to plug that I've, you guys know, I've, I've brought up many times. That generally I find the, the compensation overall of our employees to be lacking. And so I would encourage the council that while I have no objections to this proposal, I think we should do it. I think this puts even more, uh, this should put more persuasion upon us as a council. To seriously examine wage increases and stuff in the future. Because this is an overall cost of living increase that the employee is going to be bearing in future years. That they have not been bearing to date. And that will change the overall net and whether it makes sense to work for the city of Harrington. So. Yeah, I'm fine with this, but I think it has a long-term impact in how we think about compensation of our employees.
I agree. I think moving forward too, so. There can be something done in my opinion, and I don't know whether it's proper to do it year by year. Um, but those increases that go up, if there is increases, which Justin explained, it seems like, uh, it's, it's hyperinflated. So I think. It's going to continue to do the same thing. What has happened, um, with me personally has been. Not a dedicated, direct cost share, like you were explaining, Stephen, at work, at your place of employment. But maybe that's something that we could look at, um, year by year going forward. Maybe the city does. Whether it's a certain dedicated amount per year, uh, a percentage maybe of the increase in health insurance. Or whether it's just a dollar amount or whatever that is, I think could be done, um, to help. The fact that the, the employee does not bear one hundred percent of the increase every single year.
Yeah, I would say, I, I mean, I'm fine with the cap. I just don't think that historically the city has taken. Cost of living and wage increases seriously. And I'm not really saying it's, this is less about what we, uh, the, the, the numbers of what we need to do and more about saying this. Really should put the emphasis on saying we need to take that seriously every single year going forward. And some years, maybe the budget looks terrible and we're going to have to make some hard decisions. But still, we're going to have to think about wage increases differently, I think, than we ever have in the past.
Okay. Peter Levi, do you guys have any, anything to add? Any opinions?
This is Peter, I.
Sorry. Oh, go ahead, Peter.
Listen to all the arguments and I don't have a ready solution. It makes me pleased that I don't have to make that decision.
Thanks, Peter. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Not an easy decision for the mayor to make.
Okay.
I, I wish.
I'll be on, honest. Oh, go ahead, Peter. Sorry.
I wish I had a simple solution to the problem, but I don't. And I think. Again, the point I'd like to emphasize is we've got to keep an eye to the ambient economic situation. We find ourselves in as a nation and a world. I know that's not a very emphatic statement, but. I haven't heard any of the other council members recognize tonight that. These are different times from what they were a year ago, or six, certainly six months ago.
I, I agree with you, Peter. I, I acknowledge that I think anything that we could consider optional should be perhaps deferred until this is passed. So I, I acknowledge your point, but I think where we may differ is I think there's certain fires that are going on. That need to be corrected even in the midst of our current environment. So I, I'm very receptive to what you're bringing up.
Levi, go ahead.
Um, I'm going to echo what Peter said in that I don't have a solution and none comes to mind, to be honest with you. And I honestly am not going to express an opinion right now.
Okay, and that's fine. The, the main point with this part is that I've. It was, it was something that I wanted to bring up, see, you know, if somebody was willing to share their opinion about it, great. If, at more of, this is what I'm looking at. Does anyone, do I get five hands to go up in there and say, ah, we don't like it? That's, I mean, and that's fine. So you guys, if you guys don't necessarily have an opinion one way or another, that's, that's okay too. So.
And I've, I've worked in companies that have had, well, both types of insurance. There are some that I've worked for that have been capped and some have been not. Some companies have borne the brunt of all of it for us and. I've just had to learn to make do either way, so I never really gave it any thought, to be honest with you.
Okay. Okay, well, those are the big points that I really want to talk about, um, and, and get some input on. Um, Peter, I know you'd mentioned that, uh, our previous meeting about kind of going through line by line. Uh, of the budget itself. I don't know if we need to or if we want to particularly do that. But, um, I guess at this point, um, definitely any other red flags or anything that you guys see any. Any, uh, stuff, any, any terms that you want to bring up or look at?
Hey Nathan, real quick.
Yeah.
Salary stuff, do we want to, I know that's kind of a hinge for you too. Are you going to do that?
Yeah, I think we should. I get, yeah, that is, that is something that I've struggled with, um, as far as. I guess making a decision. I mean, what do we do there? So, yeah, that's, that is something else. I put an email that I want to talk about. So. Um, let's go ahead and do that now. I was gonna, yeah, I would. I would, uh, ask for, I guess, discussion on that. Um, what do we want to do? Where do we want to go with salaries? I know. I, I know where Stephen stands definitely on where we're at. Um, maybe solutions, number, I mean, anything that you guys can give input on that.
Well, real quick on this then is the, um. Well, the, the chart that you sent out, the wage sheet, I think we, you and I talked after you sent it out.
Yep.
The, you changed the, the year, but not necessarily. The way, some of the wages. I know we. The minimum wage went up, is going up, but then like the cer- city clerk help, I think is, that number was incorrectly. Not, or not switched over. Um, the clerk figures are previous figures. That were not, so I mean, I just want to put, point these out that these are, right, that these are typos, I guess, if you will.
Correct, yep.
And the reason too, so the clerk position has a salary in twenty twenty, which originally said twenty nineteen. And then the current. Version, or current number of twenty twenty-one was twenty twenty, was because of the change in employee. And the change from a thirty-five hour work week to a forty-hour work week salary position. So. That's. Air two, but, um, I mean, I think we had a letter from an employee that wanted, I think, what is it, a twenty-seven and a half percent raise? Um, that's a big number. So I, I don't, yeah, those are, to Stephen's point, I mean, but. The challenge that we've, and we've talked about this before, I, I know as a council member and as a mayor and as a council member now. There's been several years where there was zero. And so we could never, I mean, we've, since that time, we, we can never really make it up. And I mean, easily unless it's a big number. If you throw out a twenty-seven and a half percent raise in one year. Um, I mean, again, trying to make that up over five years, still, you're still going to be behind. So, um, but it's a. It's a chicken and the egg thing. If we give these employees raises significantly to catch up. That means that our rates are going to have to go up. And then we have the predicament of how do we, why are we raising the rates on our citizens? But that's our only source of income, which goes to what Joe said, the town needs more revenue sources, which was what. Stephen has said, we should sell some properties or what David said. I mean, there's a lot, it's, it's. It's a, it's a, uh, I would say it's a wicked web that we weave, but it, um, it's so intermingled. But, um, so that's what, I mean, I don't. Part of it is, can we afford it? You know, well, if we raise rates, we could probably afford it. Well, how much do we raise rates? Can they afford it? You know, I mean, it's, it's that whole thing. So, um. And I think, you know, if, if, obviously with an employee asking for that rate, if it doesn't, we don't get it, then we have a, probably a disgr-. You know, let's say disgruntled, but we might have an upset employee. I, I understandable. So it's a, it's a balancing act of trying to weigh both sides. With it, in my, in my opinion, so I don't.
Yep. Well, I know I'm just, I would say I'm struggling a little bit with how to do that exact thing. I'm struggling a little bit with how to do that exact thing is to balance things. Obviously, the goal would be to make everybody happy, both sides, the citizens, the employees, everybody involved, but. I don't know, I guess I'd welcome any input that you guys have. Just in general, I guess, on where to go or thoughts. You know, quick thoughts on. What's fair, what's not fair? Anything of that nature. I mean. I can, I can certainly come up with numbers and present that, and I'm obviously going to, and I'm willing to do that. However. I don't know, maybe you guys have a suggestion that I haven't thought about or seen or or something that can be fixed other. I mean, obviously some typos here that I have need to be corrected, but. But more in depth than that, I'd welcome any, any comment on that.
I was. Go ahead.
One thing to comment, this is David, the only comment I have on that, and this is the chicken and egg, it's slippery slope and. Personally, and um, well, all I gotta say is. I believe that the maintenance. Scott McGowan, been here a number of years, I would entertain. The maximum amount we could afford to raise is, get him up to. More more palatable rate, cuz he's been at a. A low rate for some years, and I think it's deserved. That whatever we can do within our budget, that we should do that. And that's me personally. We've talked about this at our meeting, our policy book, you know, just briefly. But I think if a person in that position is entitled with that many years to a little more than we're paying him right now. So I, whatever we can do. To make it fly, I I I would support that.
Okay, thank you. And that that goes to another point that I thought of too, and it's just a quick side note, and then I'll let Stephen go, but. I think Justin had mentioned it earlier tonight, is some kind of, I I believe that at some point, sooner than later, we need to have. We need to have some kind of a window or a a structure to our salaries. I think Justin's done a great job in the past of figuring that stuff out while he was doing it and, you know, Dylan too. But I believe, when, if we go to, when we go to hire somebody. We need to have an idea that works within the the current budget and maybe the following year's budget of of salaries, so. Whether it's a clerk or or Scott's position or Charlie's or whoever, is to have some kind of an idea, you know, this is. The lowest depend on experience or the highest or certifications or. Or licenses or whatever may go into that, but I think just a side note, we should definitely keep that on. Not say the front burner necessarily, but on the stove, keep it, keep in mind that we should. We should come up with something at some point. Moving forward, so Stephen, go ahead. You had something to say?
Yeah, uh, two things. So at one point, we had talked about converting Janice to hourly. And I had a discussion with her about that, and my discussion with her was positive that she felt that if it's converted at forty hours, she would be. Very open to that. I would cons, you know, in theory, if it ends up being forty hours, there's no budgetary difference. Uh, what comes into play is more the discussion that you and I and David had about how it. Coincides with some things in the handbook about time off and flex time and. Overtime and some of that other type of stuff, so. I would think about making that conversion at the same rate so that there is theoretically no monetary difference. It could result in a little bit more overtime, but because of what we're looking to do with the changes to the handbook as far as that, some of the flexible hour aspect. I don't necessarily know that you'd need to budget any different for the first year until we give it a try once. Uh, I I don't think there's inherently any arguable. Expected unavoidable increase, and then we'll know for the second year what actually did happen. Second of all. I was pleasantly surprised to see the numbers of of the increases. It was more than I thought we were gonna be able to do. So I thank you for that. I don't think it's where I ultimately wanted to see it be. But my bigger concern was not that we fix the the employee thing and move on. It's that we try and think about how we do compensation for our employees differently. When I saw a request for twenty-seven and a half percent increase, I knew that was not going to come in one year. I don't even necessarily know that it should come in one year cuz I don't. Think everyone would understand that's a very large pill for the city to swallow. And I don't know if it would be responsible for us to try and fix that much of a deficit in one year. Of course, even assuming that that the council would agree with that employee's requested increased amount. But I think the bigger thing for me is I think we're changing in a positive way. How we're looking at the compensation and we do what we can do this year. And, you know, I see one of the positions is getting nearly a ten percent raise. From what I know in my edge of the business world, that is extremely generous. And yes, I know, we're in a hole. And so we have reason to be generous, but still, for this year, all up with everything that's going on in the world. Ten percent is nothing to complain about, and maybe we do another ten percent next year, or maybe we don't, but I think for this year. I I think I'm good for the numbers that I see at this point. Even though I reserve the right to bring up some of the same concerns next year again.
And just to, to point out on there too, some of that does have to do with that health insurance cap too, so some of that's figured in there. Obviously, the the council that got the the work sheet, Sherry, I think I sent you an email as well. Anyone that looks at at. At the budget and the numbers, obviously, before. The twenty-second adoption date, obviously, numbers are subject to change, but I definitely. I definitely wanna try to do what we can. And that's, that's the ultimate goal is to, for me at least, is to be fair. And give the employees what we can while still being responsible with money. I mean, that's, I think those things go hand in hand for pretty much any, any city business in general.
Well, then, after you said what you said, I still, I then very much reserve the right to bring up the same concerns against next year, but still, I think it's a good step in the right direction for now.
Thank you.
This is Peter. I have a question. Uh, I was surprised this afternoon by Justin that one of our employees had requested a. I think you said a twenty-seven and a half percent increase in his wage. But I'm looking at the twenty twenty-one wage sheet, and the largest increase I see is nine point five percent. Is the twenty-seven and a half percent a figure that's been communicated verbally, or where can I find that, please?
I have a written letter that you can either take a copy of or look at. That was requested by that employee.
I believe it was sent on email to the council members.
Yeah, it was September, maybe. I don't, I don't remember exactly when, Peter, but if you don't have it via email, you can definitely get a copy of it.
I'll check. My fault.
And to Peter, just for that clarification, that was a request. What Nathan has presented so far, though, is not. Not, doesn't. It considers that, I'm sure, but it doesn't obviously grant that, that type of thing, or at least what we've seen thus far, so. We did receive a letter that they they mentioned and.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
I got a question, Nathan. As mentioned earlier, a few moments ago, would you be able to entertain or share who who's the employee getting ten percent uh, increase? I don't, I don't have that info.
Okay, so that wage sheet, that other attachment that I said, it's. Uh, mostly due to the the cap, which it's the public work supervisor, so it'd be Scott. And I've since changed actually both, both public works, um, numbers a little bit, but that's where it was set at when I sent that email was for Scott.
Okay, okay, very good.
So you guys, you guys will be getting uh, kind of a revamped. Another set of this, not necessarily the budget itself, but some, like the wage, the the sheet and probably the. Utility rates as well. But I wanna give you guys something at least. Get an idea where we're going.
Hope you don't.
Okay, well, again, um, for salary stuff, I I appreciate the input and I think. I have enough to hopefully attempt to make all things work and and employees happy as well. Twenty-two hours and twenty minutes, I would open, I guess I'd go forward with right now of any other. Um, and I'm kinda pertaining to line item stuff through the budget itself of any other. Um, big red flags, anything that you see, or or what is this line item, or where did that number come from type of questions? Um, that you guys should have. Throughout the budget itself.
I have a question, Jason and Nathan. Line twenty-four, the price of the fire truck in the budget is indicated at five thousand. Were we not at one time talking about a ten thousand dollar price for that vehicle?
We did, and I have since revised that to. In a sense of my opinion of what we'll get for it and also a worst case scenario, so. I will say that um, some of the numbers definitely on the income side. Where it can be changed. Possibly, it it was, it was changed. So if we count on ten thousand, Justin explained this to me and it makes perfect sense. So if we plan on ten thousand, and that's in the budget, and that extra, that. Five thousand of that's covering something, or we don't get ten thousand for it. Now we're on the hook for five thousand that we planned on spending on something else, so I lowered that amount.
It was a conservative estimate.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
I I hope that we can be around that ten thousand or maybe even more, I I really do, but. The, I had a, David and Levi kinda worked on looking at some prices, maybe of similar things and just a little bit of research that I've done, I. I just wanted to take that number down a little bit. And uh, Justin doubts, uh, not doubts, but has had can, some concerns whether it's gonna get sold, but we will sell it in twenty twenty-one.
Couple other questions, if I may. Nine twenty-eight, transfer in for criminal justice. What is the source? The revenue source for criminal justice?
So that, yeah, that's a transfer in from the Criminal Justice Fund, the the income, the sources from that um, is. Almost entirely from the state. If we go down, if I can find criminal justice, so if you go to your criminal justice fund. Those numbers are one, provided by the state, and two, that's, that's where the money itself comes from too.
I got a question, Nathan, this, David. Oh, go ahead, Peter. I, go ahead.
Line ninety-five, water capital outlay. What capital expenditures do we anticipate for that fund during the upcoming year? Do you know what the, the capital outlay was for water last year, for example?
I will answer your first question, as that is the first one that I came to. Um, the capital outlay um, is a share of some, s- few different things. So the big one being in there is the meter replacement. Um, that's a system that Justin kinda set up previously on a proactive meter replacement uh, through town, had a price. Per meter and how many meters we were aiming to change per year. So that's a big, that's a big chunk of it. That's uh, ninety-five hundred dollars of that. Second part of that is the share of the GIS mapping, so that's the. The flow analytics um, that we worked with last year and are continuing to work with this year. To electronically uh, map our utilities and frankly, whatever we want. That also includes this year. A share of the pickup replacement as well as a share of the replacement tools and equipment, so we had some. I think, if you remember, we talked about um, some tools that were, some personally owned tools that the city had. That's being used at the city or the city has possession of that we would like to get back to the owner. And replace them with our own. So those are the, those are the components that go in there. As far as your second question and what it was last year, as soon as I get in here, I can tell you that as well.
Okay. I overlooked the meter installation.
Big one. We talked a little bit about that, whether we wanted to go forward with that, because I, I think. We had some mixed feelings on it as far as the council went, but that is still currently in there. So last year, Peter, that. Uh, amount was thirteen-five.
Okay, thank you, Nathan.
So just about three thousand less. David, you had a question?
Nathan, it's David. I got a question. Yeah, I did. Thanks. Pet dog licenses and uh, how's that going with the code enforcement officer? Are we still charging people? I I mean, people. Acquiescing to that? Are they following the policy? Any, any update on that? I know you have a figure here.
As far as uh. Are you looking at the income?
Well, the miscellaneous, under miscellaneous is number twenty-six. Line twenty-six.
Yes, so that is, yep. So that is.
Is that the income?
That is an amount. So two questions, I guess. That's the amount that I am factoring in for income for people paying for their dog licenses. Second part of, if I'm understanding, your second part of your question is how's it going? I think that it's going well as far as people. Said hearing to or following the rules. However, I don't think it, it's definitely not a hundred percent. How about that?
Okay, all right. Perfect. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And I think I'm looking here at last year's too, just to make sure. That I speak correctly, and I think that um, was lowered, I had lowered that amount. And I did quite a bit. Um, just, and that's just uh, going off the fact of what we had received. This year, so again, that was just kind of a number that I, I bumped down just a little bit. I didn't wanna expect a bunch of money and then, and then obviously not get it. We do turn around and and pay the code enforcement officer, and that's part of. Um, that, whatever I would say, partially drafted, unfinished, um, job description is to. Kinda keep up on that, so hopefully that number, that actual number in twenty-one is better, but that's where I have it set at now.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this the right time?
I don't know. Yeah, I think so.
Depends, Sherry, what your suggestion is.
Well, I'm just suggesting that maybe in the notes at the, on page six. That you add the line item next to the description. Add the line number.
Gotcha.
So that it's easy reference.
Yep, I, I think that's a great idea. I can do that going forward, and and mine even looks a lot different even than already from the one that I've sent you guys, so. I wanna stress that enough that, or I wanna stress that quite a bit that. Obviously, it will be finalized and be sent to you, but things are gonna change a little bit yet again. But yeah, point taken. I will, I think that's a great idea.
This is Peter. I have a comment. I think compliment is due to Nathan and the Budget Committee and anybody else who's worked on this. You've done a great job, I think. It's readable, it's clear, it's well organized.
I'd take a little bit of kudos for that, Peter, but I think mostly that has to deal with my uh, previous. Previous uh, people.
Yeah, who did a wonderful job in years past, too. There's been a significant upgrade in the quality of the proposed budgets. Over recent years, I observed. You've done a really good job with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna chime in on that as well. I think, honestly, Nathan, your command of. Be able to answer the questions on the spot here. How much you've spent time on this? Honestly, I think you're killing it on this, and it's only gonna get better from here, and. You're right, a lot of this kickstarting is thank you, Justin, for continuing to uh, make an ongoing transition, but. Nonetheless, I've seen a a few mayors work through their first budget, and you're doing really well with it, so thank you for all the time you're putting in. Nonetheless, I've seen a a few mayors work through their first budget and you're doing really well with it. So thank you for all the time you're putting in.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate it. Definitely shout out to Justin for taking, fielding my random text messages, calls and. Meeting to uh. Do our EMS meetings and then I just happened to bring the city uh, computer with me to. To maybe have some help here and there, so. Okay, anything, anything else that you guys see that you just can't absolutely stand and you're going, what is this? Why is this? Um, you you guys will see too, I want to mention this. And I almost forgot. So the. I have some color coding because I'm I'm systematical like that. It it just works well for me. Everything that's, all the numbers and the figures that are highlighted in green on your spreadsheet. Are numbers that I'm comfortable with. I I went over them three, four, five, seven times. Um, and either came up with a number or got a number from somewhere. Some of those are from the state or or what have you. You will see a few. Um, lines or uh, dollar amounts that are highlighted yellow. Those ones are either ones that I still have a question on and want to revisit and look at to make sure that they are correct. Or something that I may want to change. There are also some and most of these that are not highlighted at all that are just white. Are salaries and benefits and some stuff like that. Incomes for like the sewer and water. Those are all dependent on what ends up happening with rates. Um, with salary increases and stuff like that. So if you guys are wondering what. Why I've got a rainbow of colors on here, that is the reason.
Hey, Nathan? Um, just real quick, so like on line one seventeen. I'd say it's easy to take it out, but that phase two lagoon in in DOE. USDA RD, that was a development. That was a loan that we had or a grant from before.
That's the one that sunsetted, correct?
Yeah, so that, well, that was the income though, but. The way this budget is is set up, that the lines over in the the far right columns. Are tied to that line, but you essentially can take that out. You could even just take out the words. Um, and the bar's account number, the same with line one twenty nine with the uh. Facility plan and hydrology report. That was something we did this year, so that's not going to be there next year. Um, so for your, probably your sanity. That's something you could take out.
Yeah, I think I'll end up probably just the only, the only reason that, and I don't know that those ones specifically are, but some of those are just tied in for the Excel and the and the. Some of those are tied to formulas. I'll probably just end up hiding some of those and then the ones that can come out that aren't tied somewhere else. I'll just. I'll just take them out of there so that we don't, I don't want to have a bunch of empty line items.
And then uh, lines three forty four and three forty five, the sales tax from uh, criminal justice. So obviously, three forty five is the point three percent that um. So that's what pays. If you remember, or some will remember, but we, this Lincoln County. Several years, like maybe five years ago, raised the rates from seven point seven percent to eight percent. Sales tax. And that point three percent was meant to be. Uh, in some people's eyes, at least the sheriff's eyes, a hundred percent pass through. But it has not been. We kept back like some money, twenty five hundred dollars or part of that was to help pay for our. Enforcement position. Scenario thing, but again, that's tied to the sales tax. So. You obviously have a formula there um, for both of those, but that's where those. That's what that that point three percent was a new. I think in two thousand. Seventeen or. Yeah, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen is when that came about because Lincoln County passed. The point three percent increase, so uh, but that's where those kind of go there.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I I saw the formulas in there. I just, I wasn't exactly sure on the point three and point one, so. That uh, saved yourself a uh, ten o'clock text. Thank you. Okay, well, we're two and a half hours in. Anything else that you guys are concerned or any more comments or anything of that nature?
No, I just would echo what the others have said too, and good job because. I've I've been there. I know a little bit what you've done and. And while the setup might be there, the framework, that's not, that's the easy part. It's trying to figure out those numbers that you've done and. You, like Peter said, you you get to make the decision. So it um, it's a challenge to. Sometimes you you noodle over one of those figures for a little while, too long, really. For anything and whatever, if it's a half hour or three hours, but it's, you're, I mean, this is, this has a big impact. This is for our city, it's for our citizens. And uh. As as much as we're four hundred and twenty people, it it still does make a big difference, so. Kudos.
Well, thanks. Definitely. The effort is definitely there. I know that. Okay, well, is everybody happy? I'm I'm happy. If you guys are good, then we can get out of here.
Um, one last question. What's, what's, what's next steps? When are we meeting again? Did we already set that in stone? Am I just? Enamored by the spaghetti that's in front of me right now or?
Yes, all of those questions. The only thing that I would say, so we have a set date for the twenty second. That's what we published um, for the final adoption. And frankly, I probably should have pushed that back a little bit, but with. I don't know. I didn't want to get into anyone's holiday schedules. So we're set for the twenty second. However, if um. And I don't, I, my goal is to not do this, but however, if I absolutely have some rushing questions, then. We can maybe have another, another budget workshop, but I don't, I'm hoping to not have to do that, being that we only have. What is that about six days? So.
What time is the proposed hearing for the twenty second?
Could be seven, I believe. Let me check for you, Peter, just so I don't tell you the wrong thing.
I can check in in the office tomorrow.
The special meetings and the and the workshops and other things like that, um, I try to make earlier so we can. Get done and over with quicker, but. Yeah, I like, it's six PM.
Six PM on the twenty second? Thank you.
Okay, well, I have what I need, I believe, to uh, get everything finalized and I will. Um, make sure that you guys have an efficient amount of time. Or a sufficient amount of time to look at it again before we meet on the twenty second, so.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
Alrighty, thanks, guys.
Guys, have a good night.
Yep, you too.
Enjoy your spaghetti. Have a good night, guys.